Meeting is called order at 5:34 on my thing, on my watch anyway. May I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to employment, future employment of a particular person or persons, collective bargaining and negotiations, and matters of litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We're now in executive session. Thank you very much. Sorry for the delay. We had a full exec session tonight. May I have a motion to exit executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. We're now in regular session. And since my machine is not up yet, I will look at the... All right, well, now the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to say, it's a good day when you can do the pledge four times. Did it three times this morning at the Havilland Middle School. I don't believe we have any agenda modifications for tonight. May I have a motion to accept the...to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Where are we here?
Motion to enter the public hearing.
Oh. We'll now open the public hearing on contract for excellence.
Tell me if I have a motion.
People read that.
Aviva.
Aviva?
May I have a motion for that?
Oh, we need a motion. I'm sorry. I have a motion to open the...what are we calling it?
So moved.
Public hearing.
Okay.
Now, we need a vote first. I'm looking sideways here and...
I didn't get a second.
Do I get a second?
I got a second.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. And hopefully we'll be back on schedule in a second here. Okay, it's all yours.
Okay. So, the C for E plan and narrative has been posted on the website for the required amount of time, and people can certainly come and ask questions. I'll just give a general overview of the changes since last year. The C for E program has been revised this year to reflect our current New York State report card. Focus is no longer on the English as a second language program. General and special education at the secondary level are the focus for 2014, 2015. This is consistent with what our data is showing us in terms of areas requiring improvement. There's a great focus on training all teachers on the Common Core. And just to refresh memory, that the C for E is really the financial aspect of our accountability status. So it requires that we put staff and programs in a C for E budget code that reflect, you know, the areas of focus, and we submit that to the state. So it doesn't look like we have any input, so I believe at the next board meeting, the board will have the opportunity to adopt the C for E plan, and then I'll be able to submit it to the State Department.
All right. Well, since it's a hearing, we should give the public an opportunity to comment. If anybody has...anybody wants to comment on the contract for excellence, other than the fact that it'd be nice if we could just get rid of it? Okay. So I am almost...I am almost...yeah.
We just received a letter from the commissioner saying that our C for E last year was approved.
Okay. Right on schedule.
Oh, thank God.
We don't have money to spend for that.
Do we have to close the public hearing? Probably. I move we close the public hearing.
We have a second?
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Let me...I'm almost here. Okay, we're up to pride.
Okay, so a couple of things. I did not get to go, but I know at least Cora went to the American Studies Film Presentation at the Rhinebeck Theater at 9:30 last Saturday morning. I do want to get a copy because I know I was interviewed by the students. Yes, you were. And...but Cora, I don't know if you want to say a few words about that?
Sure, I would love to. So this was the culminating activity of our American Studies course at the high school. This is a co-taught class by an English and a social studies teacher. There were five documentary films shared, and each of the five was created by a team of students that you would typically see in documentary, a director, editor, interviewers, et cetera. And following the showing of all of the films, there was a question and answer period. And there were two things that I would highlight in terms of the students' performance. One was their choice of topics for the films themselves. And my question to the students was, how did they make their decisions about what films to develop and explore? And they chose things including the education system countrywide with a very different twist on it, and comparing our system to other countries across the globe. They did a very personal, very heartwarming story about a student in our district who has a very serious health condition, and other topics that were just really very, very well-done. The other thing that was impressive about them was their capacity to stand and receive comment and critique, to some degree, from the audience. They had been on the other side of the table several times this year, because four times a year, they go to upstate films and interview and spend time with other documentary filmmakers. And this year, in fact, one of the people that they spent time with had won an Academy Award for his documentary. And they were prepared to sit and receive this comment and criticism from the audience. And they handled themselves with complete grace and poise and humor. So I was thrilled to be there. This was the first year that Nathan Bowles was the English teacher involved, and he just did an outstanding job. There were very few empty seats, and I encourage anyone in the future to catch this event because it was very well-done.
Thank you. We are also in moving up and graduation time period. We divide and conquer, although Doug went to all three Havilland Middle School graduate, eighth grade graduations today. I attended one. Cora attended one, and Aviva attended one. And then earlier this week were all our fifth grade moving up ceremonies. I did North Park, and Wayne and Cora and Aviva, we did them all. They happened simultaneously, but they're all moving. No matter how many times I go, you can't sit in a room with a couple of hundred people and watch them stand up and receive a certificate and an award in front of their family and not get teary-eyed. It just...it just yields the same results every single time. And the, you know, Havilland eighth grade is really tremendous with the video that they do at the end, but they were all very special, so...
Yeah, I'd like to just comment on one thing. It used to be they were on four separate days, and I was able to go to them all, and I really enjoyed...like you say, it's a really good experience. Now that they're not only on the same day, but at the same time, I can only go...and this time, I couldn't do it Tuesday, so I can only go to one of them. And I was wondering if we could go...somehow go back to at least staging them, so, you know, you can go from one to the other, if it's asked to be the same day.
Yeah, it's definitely worth looking at.
But don't just do it for me. I mean, I'm just saying, it just...it would be nice. Okay. Well, right now, we're to 6.2, Glenn. And as I pointed out that in the exec session, that at 12 years, that means you've been on the board for an entire...one class to go from kindergarten all the way through graduation, and I think that's pretty remarkable.
That's pretty neat.
Yeah.
You're talking about you.
So, this is a monumentous occasion to celebrate Glenn's longevity, dedication, and commitment to the Hyde Park Central School District. 12 years of service, volunteerism, attention to detail is just...you can't even quantify it. We all know that we've gone electronic with our board packets, but the board packets are this thick still. And in the 12 years, Glenn, if you think back to where this district was 12 years ago, I know Carol's in the audience, too, we are so far ahead. Facilities, academic, every...all of our buildings, everything in this district is improved and better, more substantial, all because of your leadership here for 12 years. And I'd be remiss to say...not to say that the first time I met you was in seventh grade, and he was this handsome curly-haired blond guy in my seventh grade class. We went to different elementary schools, and then when you...we went till sixth grade in elementary. So it meant a tremendous amount to me personally to be hired by a Board of Education. Where one of my classmates, we graduated together, your wife also graduated with us, so to be working with somebody who really went to the school district, cared about the school district, sent two beautiful daughters through the school district, and then spent 12 hard years making sure that this ship was seaworthy, worthy of pride, and headed in the right direction is commendable. So, on behalf of the district, we give you a plaque of appreciation. We wish we could do more, like increase your paycheck and all those other things, but it's with dedication...
Trip to Hawaii.
And with appreciation...trip to Hawaii, yeah. With appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the Hyde Park Central School District for 12 years of service on the Board of Education. So, I want to personally thank you with a hug.
Definitely.
Sorry, it's hot. Speech, speech, speech. Come on.
Well, I'm not the...I mean, all of us are doing this out of the caring and concern for our district and our town. Nothing that has been done on that board in the last 12 years could have been done without all of us. And it was really kind of thrilling to be a part of it, especially because I do care about the district. I mean, I was not happy when I came back and found the condition of things. You know, I've been gone for a dozen years, and I brought my kids back, and I wanted them to go to someplace where they could feel as proud of it as I did, and I'm thinking they did, so, thanks.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay, you're up again.
Okay. I'll take a little breather. Aviva is going to talk about something very exciting in Duchess County as part of the report tonight.
Okay. Some of you might know that I'm the Chair of the Mental Hygiene Board, and I serve on the Prevention Council for Duchess County. And there's something new that we want to make sure that everyone knows is available. It's called Duchess Texts, and it is from the Mental Hygiene Board. And it works like helpline, but it's for texting. And it started up, and it really is 24 hours a day. There are local people who do it, and then when they're not on call, it feeds into a national hotline. So basically, anybody can text, and you have a trained professional on the other end texting back and forth. It's confidential, except if the person is in danger. So if, you know, the safety of that person or someone else, you know, comes into question, there's a whole protocol, and then they sort of break through that and, you know, get help. So this is the flyer, and we're also going to have it on the website where the links are, so that anyone can access it, and it's free. They've been very busy. The average texting conversation is an hour and a half.
Wow.
So just very interesting, and people are trained to provide that kind of support in a way that some people are not comfortable on telephone, especially younger people.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll do whatever we can to help promote that.
Yeah, and I can say it's texts DMH to 741741.
Great. Thanks. Thank you. We did have some students and a teacher at the podium last week because there was some concern about AP Latin not being run. We will be running AP Latin. As mentioned at the board meeting, AP Computer Science does run every other year. We actually have 18 advanced placement courses. There are a few that do run every other year. We will examine, as we move forward with our STEM initiatives, if we are at the point where we can and have enough students to run AP Computer Science every other year. But we will look into that, and AP Latin is running. We were scheduled to do a...some sign...the sign project update, but our agenda got full, so that will be at the next meeting. Please know that we are working diligently on our district-wide unified signs, and we'll give you an update at the next meeting. We also had a staff member bring some concerns to the board about summer school being housed in her building. So I just...we wanted an opportunity to respond and clarify a few things. So some of this will be reiteration, and others will be part of our plan in moving forward. So just to reiterate, we have summer school for our elementary students every year, and every year we choose an elementary school to have it. They are all our students, and they are all our teachers, so we don't have strangers in the building. Just to clarify, we have never had any loss or theft reported to the building principals and/or administration. We have had some reports where maybe a book wasn't returned to a bookroom, or maybe something was out of place, but nothing substantial. Again, these are our teachers working in our district, in our classrooms, so...but we understand there's a concern that, you know, teachers bring in a lot of their personal stuff, and as it is in this state and every other state, a lot of teachers spend some of their own money. But we do give our teachers adequate supply money, as well as everything they need to teach the curriculum. And it's not to diminish those who purchase things on their own. We were all teachers. We all purchased things on our own to enhance the class, but we do adequately give our teachers supply money, and certainly willing to hear if they don't have enough. Summer school does rotate from building to building because we basically occupy the building for most of the summer, and we also have to clean every room in the summer. And maybe the pendulum swung a little bit, but one of the reasons why we have some parameters about what the classroom should look like is really philosophical. We run a year-round program. These are our children. They're coming to our classrooms, and our school is open. So we don't want them to enter a classroom environment where it says, "Do not touch," and there's big crosses, and things are locked up, and it looks like school shouldn't be open, or they're non-belongers, or they don't belong there. So we do have a philosophy that when our children come, that school's open, and the classroom is open, and this is a public space. So from that perspective, we have asked that, you know, the yellow or red tape and things don't get locked. So that's part of it. There was also a question as to the summer school budget, about the money that's provided. Well, first and foremost, anything to do with our summer program is completely funded. In addition, the teachers receive additional money to buy whatever enhancements and supplies that they want. The general education teams receive $150. The self-contained teachers receive $100 each. And then any reading, speech, or ESL teacher receives $75 apiece, just for whatever they want to use to enhance the classroom. At every summer faculty meeting, they go over pretty much the rules and the processes. It's always reiterated that, you know, you are in someone's space, so please try to respect the space if you're not in your own classroom. But that is reviewed each year. We will review that with a little bit of special attention, and also reiterate that if their supplies and their supply money is not adequate, please let us know, you know? And then we will permit teachers to maybe use some decorative sheets if they have a shelving that does have all of their personal belongings, not district-paid for. But if they have an area where it's all of their own materials, if they want to put a decorative sheet over it, as long as they don't put up the "do not touch" and, you know, the unwelcoming stuff, they can certainly cover something. If they have a cabinet that is full of personal supplies, not district-supplied...district purchase supplies, but if they have a cupboard that has all personal stuff in it, they could put a discreet lock at the bottom or the top, but no big...again, no big signs or padlocks. So that pretty much should cover it. We're trying to really keep the...respecting people's personal property while conducting public education all year round, and bringing our own children and our own teachers in, and even for the teachers. They don't want to walk into a room that feels like they're unwelcome, so... The second part of that was, where is the district's responsibility for moving teachers' items? And I wanted to clarify, what was conveyed to the board was that there was a teacher who had to personally move 66 boxes to her home and then bring them back to the school. And I need to clarify that, and I'd like to extend to Carol Matier and the custodial staff at Netherwood an apology for not being able to step in at the moment that that was being described. So, the scenario that year was, each year we choose a building, or because of some constructive needs, we need to have everything boxed up and moved out of the classroom. So the teacher in reference, that was a summer when every single classroom needed to be boxed up. The custodial staff moved hundreds upon hundreds of boxes, relocated them to one part of the building so they could work on the other. All of the boxes were returned by the custodial staff with nothing damaged and returned to the rooms. No one was required to move their own boxes. We had a teacher who chose to bring her materials home rather than have them relocated to another part of the building. That was a teacher choice. It was not a district requirement. And I really don't know the background. I didn't talk to that teacher. That teacher was not here. It was...but it was reported that somebody had to move 66 boxes themselves and take them home, and we had a lot of conversation that if we're asking people to move these things, then we should help them. What was the missing piece was the custodians that moved hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of boxes, and nothing was damaged, and I guess somebody decided to personally move their boxes home, and that is a choice. We did not require anybody to move a box, so I wanted to clarify that. And I don't know if there's any questions on the topic. We certainly appreciate teachers who buy their personal things. We are a public education. We run school 12 months out of the year. We need our classrooms open. They are public space. So I think I shed some light on it, and I'd also like to just acknowledge Nancy Malzon and her commitment and her willingness to purchase all these wonderful things for her speech classroom. But we do provide supplies and everything needed every year, and we are confident that if somebody is utilizing the space that she utilizes during the rest of the year, that it will be respected.
I just wanted to add to that, and thank you, Greer, for that report, because, you know, I certainly had some comments about that. I think I was the one that suggested, you know, we should move the boxes, you know? And that's all well and good for me to pop off like that at the table when you're operating on information that's presented at the podium. And I want to also acknowledge the custodial staff at Netherwood for their very hard work that particular summer. Was that last summer or another summer?
I think it was...
I guess it doesn't matter, when it happened at Netherwood, you know, for their hard work. And, you know, I guess I'll just say, you know, it would be nice if, when folks brought issues to the podium, that you were getting the whole story and not, you know, their side of the...or their view of the world, which, you know, looking back on it in the big scheme of things, inconvenient as it may be, there's a lot worse things going on in the world, in the work world, wherever you work, than that particular issue, so... And again, you know, acknowledge that the staff at Netherwood for the hard work they did that summer, moving stuff back and forth, so...
Okay, that it? Okay, we'll move on. And Melissa, we now have the Ralph R. Smith Elementary School presentation.
So Melissa's coming up, and thank you, Melissa. I do want to acknowledge that we tried something new this year with our schedule, and it didn't work. So it did and it didn't. We...I'll take complete ownership of this one. We wanted to condense our building presentations to one time of the year. We selected this time of the year. And my apologies, Melissa, for thinking that we should ever have a building principal give a presentation on the last day of school in an un-air-conditioned building. So my apologies and my appreciation to you for really just, you know, not just saying this is weird, but, you know, not having a problem whatsoever with it. We will continue to visit all the buildings. We'll look at a schedule that keeps us in air conditioning during air...when it's needed, and being sensitive to building principals and what it's really like to be here on the day that school is ending. So, thank you, Melissa.
Well, thank you. It's fine, and thank you for the acknowledgement, but, you know, it's part of what we do, the board presentations, and I want to celebrate all the hard work we've done this year. So what a...what better time to do it than at the end of the year? So, welcome to Ralph R. Smith, for those of you who haven't been here. And I hope everyone can see the screen. If you can't, feel free to move over. But we have had a wonderful year this year, and we have really worked hard to improve in many areas, and we're going to talk a little bit about that today. Hopefully this clicker is cooperating. So for pride today, I just want to acknowledge two of our teachers who are retiring after many, many years of service. And Mr. Ed Doyle, today was his last day after teaching in fifth grade in this building for 45 years. So he's just an amazing guy, and we wish him the best in his retirement, but there are big shoes to fill. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And also Ms. Edith Stratton, who has been here for 25 years, teaching orchestra, not only in this building, but in all four elementary buildings throughout the years. And she also does a fabulous job, really developing a passion for music in our students, which continues on for the rest of their lives, so we appreciate their service. The last day of school, as all of you know, was today, and we sent our children off in grand fashion with a bubble machine and cheering and waves goodbye. I think it was a really great send-off. And we also do a special thing now in the district where we all move up to meet their new teachers. So all of the kids spend time today... So, all of the kids spend time today moving up to the next grade level, and meeting their teacher, and getting to interact with their new classmates. We found that it really helps alleviate some of that stress over the summer, of who's my teacher going to be, and who's going to be in my class? And, so, it's a really nice experience for our kids. And, it's almost like the first day of school, the excitement you can feel in the hallways as they're moving up to next year's classroom, and it's a really nice way to end the year. So, they had a really good time, and lots of smiles coming back to their old classrooms. So, and I'd also like to acknowledge two of my teachers who are here, Sharon Foster, our librarian, and Mary Ellen Trulitas, one of our kindergarten teachers, who, you know, it says a lot to come here on the last day of school, to come back to support all the work that we do in the building, so thank you. So, on to academic performance data. At this point, the data is a year old, so we will go through it briefly. As you can see, in ELA, we have scores between two and four. Fifty-eight percent of our students met the benchmark, according to the state. In fourth grade, sixty percent, and in fifth grade, fifty-two percent. That was a little bit of an increase from last year, but all of you have heard this before, the tests have changed dramatically, and the expectations are far greater. So, the kids and the staff are learning about the Common Core, and learning how to support our kids, and really dive deeper into critical thinking skills and literacy skills. So, we are learning right along with our kids, and my staff is doing a great job and celebrates that work. In math, in third grade, we have fifty-two percent of our kids meeting the benchmark. In fourth grade, fifty-four percent, and in fifth grade, twenty-nine percent. And when I looked at that fifth grade score, it was very surprising to me, and I'm really not sure what happened there. And we struggle with the new testing, we're not allowed to look at the tests, to see where our kids fell apart. So, it is a struggle to really identify, in some cases, what they struggled with. So, we're working with that, and through work with Kim Niesel this year, she's been in our building once a month, working with the teachers on the new modules, and how to support kids and teachers in this new learning. We've developed a lot of really good strategies, as far as ICANN statements, and working with the kids and the teachers. I have two teachers in my building that have also done PD for the staff once a month, learning about all of the new math jargon and lingo that goes along with the modules in Common Core. So, in science, we, in fourth grade, we're at ninety-seven percent, which is a jump up from last year. And, on the last two columns, you can see our Fontis and Pennell benchmarks for beginning of year and middle of year. And, in all cases, well, except for second grade, we went up in scores as the year went on. And in second grade, it was a drop of one percent. And what I attribute that to is, in second grade, kids are really learning strategies to apply to their thinking and writing about reading, and that can be very difficult for some of our second graders. And it does take longer for some of them to grasp that skill. I'm happy to report that at the end of the year, for second grade, we're at sixty-eight percent meeting the benchmark. So, that's something to celebrate. And we usually get there at the end of the year, it's just that middle-of-the-year benchmark is really tough for those second graders, because the expectations are far greater. So, that is our data. With that data comes a lot of thought and work, and we analyze the data once we're given it, and really set some goals for the building. We have two reading teachers in our building, Rachel Weigert and Kathy O'Connell, who have been working to use that reading data to drive our instruction. So, they have been doing workshops once a month for staff, both here and at North Park. And what they've been doing is taking those reading assessments and working side-by-side with teachers, and, okay, this is where our kids are, what are our next steps? Let's dive into this work, and identify some goals for each of our students. So, that has really gone over well, they are expecting to continue that work next year. And I know that the teachers have learned a lot about how to really diagnose, and then provide interventions for our students. This year, in writing, last year, both Deanna Gonzalez and I, the principal at Violet Avenue, attended Teachers College for a week, and we went to learn about Units of Study, which is a curriculum for writing. And, we came away so excited, as I'm sure Greer and Aviva and Cora remember, about what we learned, and just couldn't wait to bring it back to the buildings, because to us, as former reading teachers, it felt like the next natural step. We have kind of, we're on a really good path for reading instruction, and our writing instruction was lacking. And, we really needed to have something that was aligned with Common Core, which Units of Study is. And, we have been working together in both buildings to support that work. And, in this building, what that looked like is, every month, for K through two teachers, and for three through five teachers, I led professional development for them. And we really dived into, not only what are units of study, but how do we look at kids' writing, and assess it, and set goals for the future? And, I'm really proud of the work that we have done this year, and the amount and the quality of writing that we have seen, it's just amazing. And, I'm so proud of the kids and the teachers for all the work that they've done. And, in a time where we are just piling on new after new after new stuff, they just dived right in, and they were all excited about the new writing curriculum, and I can't ask for more than that, so. We also have been doing some math PD, as I mentioned before. Two of my teachers, Erin Daniels and Jennifer Farren, led that work with the entire staff. So, I am very proud to say that we offer a tremendous amount of professional development opportunities here in the building. And, I would say, there is at least seventy-five to eighty percent participation at every PD opportunity that we have in the building. So, we've had a very active BLT this year as well.
Building Leadership Team.
Excuse me?
Say out the acronyms, just in case.
Oh, I'm sorry. BLT stands for Building Leadership Team, and that is a group of people who come together to really set goals for the building. We have community members, parents, faculty and staff, and myself, sit on that team together and identify goals. So, the two goals that we set for ourselves this year is to explore a bully prevention program, and to support Common Core for families. There are a lot of questions out there about Common Core, and what does that mean for my child? And, we worked on a couple of projects this year that I can share with you. So, the first thing that we did is, Aviva came to me last summer, I think, with an opportunity to explore the Olveas Bully Prevention Program. And, we were fortunate enough to receive a grant through the Mediation Center in Duchess County, and we've been working with them as a building to learn more about this program, and how to implement the program. So, this year has been a learning year for us as a faculty. We expect to roll out the curriculum in the fall, and our kickoff event, which you are all welcome to attend, is on the nineteenth of September. So, as we started this program, we did a online survey of our third through fifth grade students to find out how they felt about bullying in their classrooms, in their school, and in their community. We learned a lot about how they're feeling. We also took a look at the survey that was done by the district, to figure out how families felt about bullying. And, there were some interesting finds that we found there. The kids felt safe, however, parents had a perception that their kids did not feel safe. So, there's a disconnect there, and we need to work on that. So, this program will really help with that, and give us a lot of good opportunities to support kids, and really teach them how to be kind, caring individuals. But, the program focuses on training the bystander, the kid who's watching bullying happen, and how they can shift the role, and shift the circle, so that they can support the victim, and stop bullying in its tracks. So, on each one of your tables, you have our new bullying, anti-bullying rules, and they're all written as ICANN statements. And there are some materials that are on the table that you can share. There are some read-alouds that we will be using next year, and have been using this year, and some training materials that the teachers have received. So, we're really excited about that. And, it's a coordinating committee that will be training the faculty. I know Greer and Cora have had an opportunity to see some of that work, and it's real positive stuff. So, the support for Common Core, as I said, based on the district survey that was done, we really saw that parents were struggling with, how do I support my child at home? I feel comfortable in the area of literacy, but I'm really struggling with math. So, we really wanted to develop some systems that would help parents. So, this year, we created two videos that we are posting over the summer, and they're instructional videos done by our faculty, to help parents understand, okay, what is bar modeling? I have no idea, my kid's coming home with his homework with bar modeling, I don't know what that is. So, there's a video that demonstrates all of that work, and how you support your child at home with bar modeling and number bonds. So, those are the two videos that will be up, and we're hoping to produce more next year, as the year goes on. We're also planning for an informational night in the fall. And, in addition to that, the BLT created pamphlets that went home in report cards today, that really explained what third grade is about, or what fourth grade is about. And, we tried to talk about the exciting things that happen, but also some of the curriculum that kids will be experiencing. We don't want there to be any secrets out there. We're all excited to share information, and we're trying to do it in formats that are interesting and new for families. Extracurricular activities, we are very happy to have Debbie St. Ange back this year, doing a chess club before school, she comes every Friday. And we have probably about fifty kids that have participated in chess club. It's a nice enrichment activity. And, before school seems like a great time for kids to come in. They spread out on the gym floor, they learn how to play chess, and then they have tournaments with each other. And, she also does the chess club at Netherwood Elementary School. And this year, we combined for a couple of events, so that was really exciting and new. In addition, every March, we celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday with a Read-A loud Day celebration that is organized by two of our teachers, Rachel Weigert, one of our reading teachers, and a first-grade teacher, Jennifer Farren. And, it is a half-day workshop, where kids rotate from different classrooms to different classrooms, and hear read-alouds, and do exploration activities based on that read-aloud. It's a fabulous day, so if you ever have a chance to come, you should definitely check it out. In addition, we have the Healthy Kids After School Program, which is a new program this year here and at Haveland Middle School. And, they began this winter, they had two sessions, and those two sessions were at capacity. The kids really enjoyed the program, we're waiting for the data to come back, as far as the successful nature of the literacy program, so I hope that we will be able to share that with you soon. But, I heard nothing but positive about this after-school literacy-based program that was really designed to meet the needs of kids who are struggling in the areas of reading and writing. And finally, character education, we continue this year in our bucket filling. There are some books that are coming around as read-alouds. It's the concept of, everyone has an internal bucket, and when you do something nice, you fill your bucket, and you feel good about yourself. And, when someone does something not so nice, you dip into your bucket and don't feel so good. So, it's a very elementary concept that is very teachable, and you can hear kids saying, "You dipped into my bucket," you know, as they're walking down the hall. So, they've really embraced the concept, and we support that in many ways in the building. In addition, we do have the Second Step Program for our students. It's a character ed program that really teaches kids about identifying feelings, and how to talk to one another in social situations. And as I've already explained, we're underway with the Olveas Bully Prevention Program. Finally, for parent and community involvement, we have a very active PTA. And, they have done so many wonderful things this year, and this is just a sampling. We are in year two of our play this year. We did Peter Pan, which was fabulous. The year before, we did Wizard of Oz. We do numerous assemblies that are funded through the PTA throughout the year. This year, for Read-A loud Day, PTA donated a book to every child in the school. We also have numerous family fun nights every year. And PARP, which is Parents as Reading Partners, is done in the month of March to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. In addition, we are in year three of Vassar Eye-to-Eye Program. And, just as a reminder, that is a program that pairs students who have ADHD at the college level at Vassar, with students in our building that have similar diagnoses. And, they mentor through art, and they create art projects, and then, at the end of the year, they have an art show and graduation at Vassar. And, the nice thing is, it really models for kids that, yeah, you may be struggling with this diagnosis, but you can be successful, and you can go to college, and here are some strategies that worked for me, and you might want to try that. And they design their ideal classrooms and learning spaces, and really get to understand how they best learn, so that they can then communicate that with the folks that are working with them. It's a fabulous program. We are also in year three of Marist Partnership for Reading. And, the reading three students from Marist come here in the fall for the entire semester. They work in our classrooms for a full day every Wednesday. And, our teachers do a lot of professional development for them as they're here. And then, in the spring, we invite them back as student teachers. And, it's a fabulous partnership, again, that I'm very proud of, and happy to say that it's working out well for all of us involved. Also, this, new this year, this summer, is a new partnership that we will be having with Astor Head Start. We are happy to announce that we will have a preschool program, one classroom here in the fall. And, that is just so exciting to me, because I started out as a preschool teacher, and I'm so happy to have our youngest students, and they will be Hyde Park families. So, it's just fabulous to have them in the building, and part of our school community. And in addition, we also have Foster Grandparent Program, where we have grandparents who come in and volunteer on a regular basis in our classrooms, and really establish some nice, positive relationships. positive relationships with kids. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Anyone?
I'll just say one comment. You've mentioned the writing program that you're doing here and in Violet Avenue, and actually, because of Deanna and Melissa's enthusiasm, it's in all four of our elementary schools now.
I'd like to just make a comment on Mr. Doyle. I think I first went into his classroom 20 years ago to do National Engineers' Day thing, and every year, I was in his class. And one thing I want to say, 20 years ago, there were four male elementary school teachers in this building. Four. I'm assuming Mr. Doyle's the last one. I'm not exactly sure what your staff makeup is, but...
We have two others.
I would actually like to see more male elementary school teachers, just like we need more teachers of color in all our grade level. But, I think to have the right male, Mr. Doyle happened to be one of them, in an elementary situation is really, really good for young boys. And I'm happy he's retired. He's a great guy. I hope we can find someone of his caliber to replace him, so...
Yeah, he's going to be a hard person to replace. There's no one that's like Ed Doyle. But, I'm happy to report that the person who will be teaching fifth grade is extremely excited about her role and will bring all sorts of unique aspects to the fifth-grade curriculum and team.
I'm not sure. I think I did the math right. We've got 45 years and 25 years between, just between two teachers. I think that's 70 years of experience. I mean, that's incredible.
Yeah.
It's almost a question of how do you recover from that? You know, how long does it take? But, you know, I wish them both well, and thanks for all the years of service.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much, Melissa.
Thank you. Okay, we are now up to 7.3 Capitol Project Proposal. That would be Chuck.
Bill first, I think. Is it Bill first? Or is it Chuck first? I don't know who's first. That's what I thought, yeah.
I have props.
I can introduce while Bill's setting up his props. For those who don't know, I'm Elliot Garcia, the Director of Facilities for the School District. I've been working pretty closely with Bill and Wayne and Chuck to put this proposal together for you this evening. We're going to provide some background information, building on what we expressed at the last meeting on a potential Capitol project. Back in January of this year, the flow chart on the screen is something that I provided to the administration and to the board to kind of graphically illustrate what our concerns are at the Haveland Middle School heating system. It's color-coded, as you can see. The red boxes are the ones that were already addressed during Capitol projects in the last two to three years. The yellow items at the very end were the end-user equipment that we were having the most trouble with over this past heating season. And the green boxes in the middle are other areas, secondary areas of concern, that we couldn't address during the emergency repairs, but definitely things that needed to be looked at. So, as Bill sets up his presentation, he's going to walk you through the full proposal, which is really going to show how we can upgrade the equipment as pertains to the yellow boxes at the end of the chart, and also address the green boxes in the middle so that by the end of this project, assuming all goes well, every item on that chart will be less than three years old and fully operational. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Bill Westbauer to continue the presentation.
Thanks, Bill. And actually, you know, we'll go as quickly as possible because the board is pretty intimately aware of this proposal, but if at any time we're going too fast, just say so. How's that?
Okay, good. Well, good evening, everybody. Glad to be here on a hot night. Again, Haveland Middle School. Let me just go to this picture here, all right? You have basically three areas, A-B and A1, as we call it. The A-wing is the original 1954, and A1 is the 54 edition, and the B-wing is an addition done in 64. There's three types of heating systems, all right? You have the A-wing is a hot air system. The A1 used to be a hot air system that was switched over to a hot water system, and the B-wing is the hot water system. And then, we have the supply for the hot water to those areas comes from underneath, in the ground from the original building. So, what's the issues? What's going on in the A-wing, all right, is you basically have a hot air ducted system, all right? This ducted system goes underground so that it's not, the areas underneath the A-wing are not fully accessible. You have ducts that go in the ground, and then they come up through on the outside, this perimeter, hot air, all right? What's going on is your, this system is failing. It's from 1954, all right? The ducts are transferring or losing heat in the ground, plus, there's heat loss going on here because this is not an insulated wall to the outside. So, the heat's coming up here, and you're having heat loss also going on out there. Also, what's going on in the building is that the hot air system in certain areas is not uniform, which we believe what that indicates is that some of the ductwork in the floor slab has actually started to crumble to a degree, all right? So, we're not getting that operating. The other thing you should also understand about this hot air system is that you're okay under current as grandfathered, but you don't have the same amount of airflow that you would as if you were doing brand-new construction, all right? Or renovation-type work. Also, what's unique at the A-wing is that you have a series of where the classroom doors are. The wall does not go down to the bottom because the exchange of hot air that's going into the classroom, that has to be exchanged back and reheated or exhausted out, comes underneath these little reliefs in the wall, all right? The problem with that is your flow is not uniform. And the other thing which relates to a New York State Building Code issue, but again, you're grandfathered, but if you do work, you have to touch it, you have to fix it. This is not a fire-rated petition. They don't want this to happen because the corridor is an emergency exit, and if there was a fire going on in this classroom, they don't want that fire or smoke to be adding into the corridor. So, this area here, under any kind of work, has to be closed up. The gym and the cafeterias have individual units. The gym has individual units. The cafeteria has individual units that supply heat to those areas. And then, in the A1 wing, you have what was done at some period of time, I don't know when. They got rid of the hot air system, and they put UVs up high, and they're fed by steel pipes. Steel piping brings the hot water to those systems. This wall here still is a gap open. There's nothing going on in there. There's no insulation. And so, what's going on here is these UVs, again, are, you're having problems with the piping because of your problem with age and corrosion, and these UVs actually are having problems because of their age. Again, they weren't done in 1954. We suspect maybe they were done in 64 when they converted. Maybe they did the addition. The reason why these units are up high is the same reason why we're talking about them, is this wall is too low for you to put a, you know, the typical UVs that you see in classrooms here, is not enough height. So, that's why you had to go with this soffit along the window wall. So, what we've been talking about here is, again, converting the hot air system, all right, over to a hot water system and do all that work that I was kind of talking to you on the pictures. At the gym areas, we're talking about, again, replacing all the air handling units, upgrade them. Where also what goes on is your kitchen has no heat, and what happens in your kitchen is your kitchen exhaust just has an exhaust system. So, you actually have some issues in the kitchen because it doesn't always get enough heat in it, and that exhaust is actually pulling air from the other parts of the building through that. And in this wing, A1, the exhaust dampers aren't functioning anymore, and they're wide open. So, in severe cold winter, when the kitchen exhaust is running, it's actually drawing cold air into the hallway, all right? It's reversing it. It's drawing it into the hallway, running down the hallway, down through, and exhausting it back out. So, that's adding to the temperature drop because when the kitchen's running. So, again, the A1 and B1 is to replace all the ceiling-hung units. On the B, you have copper. We don't have to replace the copper piping. We're just replacing those units. What we also want to do, and I'll go back to here, is what I want to do, we're recommending is that we're going to insulate this wall, all right? Put insulation in the gap. And then, also to seal this off, we're also going to put a plastic laminate windowsill to kind of completely seal this off so that we don't have that heat loss coming through We're also, what we're talking about is in the original building, the heat exchangers. We want to exchange those, get rid of those. They're at the end of their useful life. They're the ones that, basically, again, you're building those boilers, which are brand-new, all right? They produce steam. They can produce hot water in the future. They were designed that way. You can go either way. They produce steam because the main building has steam, and then you have to go to the heat exchangers where that steam is changed to hot water, and then that hot water runs. What we're talking about here also is not to replace or put the piping that goes through the original building all the way around in here. We're talking about putting a trench out here and connecting it out there. Basically, that's a cost factor that deals with the trench, well, the tunnel space because there's piping in there that's wrapped with asbestos, not just what deals with the A and B wing, but there's also a lot of steam piping that's dealing with the original building. It becomes a confined space to work. So, cost-wise, when we looked at it, generally, we felt it was lower in cost, and actually, we feel maintenance-wise, it's better to put it on the outside. So, the schedule, again, this is just hypothetical types of schedule. If you were able to do a referendum in September, all right, we'd get drawings, we'd go up to the state sometime in November. SED review time, there's not much you could do with that, but what we have talked, I'm giving you the worst-case scenario. We have talked to them, would talk to them about accelerating this because of the condition of the buildings. And right now, what this is based on is that the worst case, so we're showing construction starting in July of 15, and the work would go through, but it would be phased because, again, we're switching systems over. So, like, the A-wing could continue to function while we're doing a complete system replacement and have it all finished by November of 15. Project hard course for this, basically, again, it's capital work, and it's aidable. So, the total project cost for this is roughly $2.8 million, and this includes all the soft costs, contingency costs, and work to be done next year. North Park, all right? North Park, as it has been discussed, you have a humidity issue problem going on in there. I know Elliot and his staff have worked extensively to look at that, and basically, it has determined that it's the outside, it's the location of the building, it's between water areas, it has a relatively high humidity outside, especially at the ground level. And basically, what's happening is the classrooms are bringing humid air in. That system exchanges the air that's in the classroom into the hallways, and the hallways then extend it out. So, you have this very humid air that's being drawn from the inside, from the outside, comes in through the building. So, the solution is to take that outside air that's coming in and reduce that humidity prior to becoming in. So, basically, what we're saying is we replace all the units with a new steam heat DX cooling units and dehumidification controls. All the rooftop units that serve the four primary areas as far as, I would say, the corridors, all right? That would then have that to circulate and improve that air, replace all the gym, cafeteria, and administrative areas, also their rooftop units, and then also upgrade the DDC controls. You can, we can replace it with, and keep it running at steam, or you can replace it and convert it to hot water, all right? There is more energy efficient, and that's the way we were looking at it, you know, this is one of the ideas we'll show you here, is it's more energy efficient if it's a hot water system, all right, to the UVs and the rooftop units. Schedule of this, again, same rough timeframe as Haveland Middle School. The only thing is, is that this work would take a little bit longer, so this would, again, would be done in phases, and basically, it gets completed sometime by January of 16. Project cost on this is $2.4 million. The piping option there of $460,000 is if you wanted to replace, again, those are original steam piping, and convert that to a hot water hydronic system because it is reaching, getting close to the end of its useful life. So, you can replace the, at the same time, replace it to a hot water system, and that would be about $460,000 more. So...
Do we want to hear the financial piece first and then ask questions, or...
Yeah, I think, I would like to hear the finance.
Thanks, Bill.
Chuck, my opinion. How does everybody else feel?
It's fine.
That's good. All right.
Just like to take a moment to introduce Chuck Bastian with Bernard Donigan's office and his assistant over here, who's actually his daughter. I missed last time, so I promised. Your first name is Caitlin, so she's here with us tonight, too. So, the second part of this is certainly the finance, and Chuck is our fiscal advisor and does a fantastic job with the district, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
I think a lot of you have seen our reports in the past for various Capitol projects that we've had through the years. I think you have this in your computer, your board packets there, our report. It's about a 20-page report. We were asked to run two scenarios financially for you, a $3 million capital project and a $5.5 million capital project, which dovetails into what Bill just went through for you. So, if you will, go into page three. And again, I think a lot of you have been through this before, but we'll briefly review the assumption page. So, if everybody has that on there, or if you don't, go ahead and raise your hand, and I'll wait for you. But, the assumption page, again, anytime we talk about a Capitol project, what assumptions do we build, do we use in our models here? So, number one, first and foremost, the building aid ratio. So, that one, we have at 59.1% right now, and that's a very good building aid ratio. We also have the bond percentage, and again, in working with Bill and everybody on the project, the goal is 100%, fully aidable at the 59%, but we leave a little margin of cushion in there in case there is something that ends up not being aided by the state. But, I believe on this type of a renovation project, the goal should be certainly 100%. We have a couple of key dates in there. As Bill mentioned, the different steps you'd have going through, and everything that we have to project is very date-driven. All the dominos have to be set up in a certain order. So, we have down a vote, if it's at the end of September this year, then SED approval Bill has given us sometime in early 2015. Do your work through the summer of 15, maybe the fall of 15, and then wrap up. And I need to then make sure that final cost reports get in timely after that so that we can get the building aid flowing to match up when we've done the bonds and the principal and the interest. So, if it's the spring or summer of 16 that you're... So if it's the spring or summer of 16 that you really get going, that would be when we'd have our first borrowing, June of 16. A year later, sorry, June of 15. A year later, June of 16, we'd have our first interest payment, and then principal the year after that, June of 17. Again, we have a couple of interest rates down for sample borrowing rates like we've used in the past. And on the next page, you'll see the breakdown of the budget in the two different scenarios. So for the right-hand side, on the expenses for a $3 million project, as Bill mentioned, it's around $2.8 million. And I also need to build in on top of that some capitalized interest. Again, because we need to pay the bank at the end of that first year on the note, but we don't have the building aid flowing yet. So we need to capitalize part of the interest payment out of the authorization. And that would give us roughly the $3 million. Same thing down below on the $5.5 million building project. So let me pause there. I probably went through those assumptions a little quickly and see if you have questions on any of those. Well, do we want to deal with questions now, or do we want to deal with the end?
I would prefer that we deal with questions as they come up.
Okay. Okay. You want to start?
I just wanted, yes, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The, the, the two interest rates that you give us, 3% and 4%, I'm sorry, 4% and 5%.
Right.
I guess with our, the rating, the financial rating for our district, I'm a little surprised at how high those are. Are my expectations incorrect, or is the market changing?
Oh, you're right on the mark. And I would hope that you're watching that, too, because those are conservative. And you've probably seen every report we've done in the past. We've been very conservative, and we need to be for you. Because if somebody, two years from now says, geez, Chuck, you used a 4% for the bond rate and it came out at 4.1, they're going to let us know about it. So we need to be conservative on that. And what we really have is the differential. That's really what, what it comes down to for higher building aid ratio districts. I'm using 4% for a state-assumed interest rate, which is where they aid you at, and I'm using 5% for the bonds. So I'm building in about a 1% differential, kind of a cushion between the two. Today, the state-assumed rate is 2.25, very, very low. Your bond rate today would probably be about 3%, 3.25, much less than 5. Yes, that's correct. But the differential is about the same. So if things move to 4% and 5% or 3% and 4%, that's what I got to, that's what I got to fine-tune for you. But that's a good question. The note rates, you're right, I'm using 4%. Today, they're under 1. They're under a half a percent. We've had one-year notes less than a half a percent, which is pretty far off the charts. And as you know, by the time we would get ready to do a note a year or two from now, or renewal, those, the short-term rates are the ones that move the quickest in the bond market. So we just need to leave a cushion there. Any other questions on the interest rates? Or any others? Not on interest rates, but on your assumption of SED approval. On your SED approval number four, you've identified January of 2015. But on Bill's report, he was saying April. Yeah, and certainly, I will go off of exactly what, what the architect's got. And if that changed a little bit before or since I've gotten the report printed, absolutely. If, if that slides, let's say State Ed doesn't even get the approval by April. It turns into May or June or July. I will shift the borrowings accordingly. If it comes sooner, and he was thinking April and it's March or February, I can shift the borrowings earlier. So yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to play exactly off of what it actually comes out to be and what his latest estimate is. This was just to come up with a framework to make sure I could at least have some, some plan come off of these dates. Yeah. Frankly, my concern wasn't as much for your part of the project as it was for what that schedule really means to the project itself and the way that it operates. But we can maybe pick that up later. Okay. All right. So those are the assumptions. That's very good. The next few pages get into, for at least the $3 million scenario, we'll start with that one. I think we have three or four pages of your existing debt. So that's very good to see because the, the whole goal behind these two scenarios, either one, is to see if we can fit either project into your existing debt because you have a drop-off coming up, which is, which is very good. Again, a lot of districts have bonds that are maturing and being paid off, and they have a drop coming off. What, what are your needs and what is your timing? Do we have an overlap? Do they fit perfectly? Is there a gap? Because, again, now in terms of the tax cap world that we have to live with and deal with and do calculations, and I know Wayne's been working on this, every district's been working on it with the comptroller's office, and you do it in the spring with your community. We have to really be watching this. This is, you know, in front of us. And how we can plan for that is key because you do not want to have big exclusions one year and not the next. Or you don't have it in the first year and you're going to have it the next year, and you're talking 6% or 8% increases without needing a supermajority. So if we can plan at least this portion of your budget, I know there's other pieces of your operating budget, but if we can plan at least this piece of the operating budget, the debt service component, and keep it flat, that's, that's a win. That's at least one win out of the other aspects of your operating budget that you're trying to manage. So that's the goal here, and we need to take a look at all your existing debt. There's a page eight, I believe, very small print. It's your summary page of the debt service. It's the last page of debt service, and there's a, a big box toward the bottom, total debt service. And the right-hand column in that box says local share. My numbers are blue. I'm not sure if yours copied through as blue. But you'll see that after a few years, there's a nice drop coming up, which is wonderful. So now that you have, we're looking down the road. We've got the high beams on at night, and we're looking far down the road, a couple of years out. When does that hit? And what are your current needs now as you go through any of your buildings that you're looking at? So we see that drop coming, and I now need to see if I can fit this $3 million project within it. Okay, so if you will, there's a couple more pages, nine and 10, talk about building aid. We've seen those before, but let's go to page 11, our maturity schedule. Up at the top, it says proposed $3 million capital project, proposed 16-year maturity schedule. Okay. And you'll see those interest rates we were talking about. That's good. We'll see the principal being paid back in column C for a $3 million project. Now, what you're going to notice also, let's stay, let's focus on that column C for a minute. You'll see those first few principal payments, $370,000, $400,000, $315,000. Those are large principal payments compared to later on. We dropped down to 115, 120, 130. Why is that? Every other project I've shown to you has been increasing principal as your interest has been decreasing through the 15 years so that your total debt service is nice and level. What we can do here is front-end load the payoff on this bond because of your debt drop-off. Because, again, the ultimate goal, if you want to play chess, which is a great thing to do, you want to plan a couple of moves ahead, is you want to keep a flat levy cap calculation in terms of the debt exclusions in, in year one to year two. So it's, it's very much calculated here. And again, it's, it's your choice, but this is a very good mathematical mechanism that we can use to do that for you. Okay, so over on the far-right side now, you'll see those first few years, $369,000, $381,000, $276,000 for the local share. That's, that's what we're trying to do, is fit that in. If you will, turn to the next page and you'll see the bar chart. This, this is really how you see everything come together rather than just looking at each of the numbers. So the blue bars are the existing debt each year. That's your local share after the building aid comes in. Again, that's, you're getting roughly 60% building aid on your projects. So you'll see, we've drawn a black horizontal line across for your upcoming year, the 14, 15 year. That's your benchmark. That's, that's our line. $1,244,000 is our local share. So that's in your tax cap calculation. So if we can maintain that, that would be great. That, that at least keeps one piece of all your variables that you juggle every spring, keeps that constant. So what we've done with the new project is we've layered in the green bars. And you'll see that first year, 16, 17, there's a bar that, that fills that gap. Now, if we don't have a project, if, if that's, if that's how it ends up, or we don't have, and I can't put something in that bar, then you'll have a tax cap situation going on. You'll have a drop without anything to fit into it. And that'll need some explaining to the community because it's not going to be an easy concept to understand. I don't know if everybody's kind of thought that one through in their head. But that's how you, you want to think ahead on these, on this planning. So your timing for these needs, it's always tough to have the needs, but the timing can work out very nicely here.
Chuck, can I ask a question at this point? Looking at this, can I draw that in keeping our debt service flat? This would keep our debt service flat through 2022.
The local share, yes.
Local share. So if we needed to borrow before 2023, if we had a need for additional capital work before 2023, that would then put us over and above that, that flat debt service, local share.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, and that's, that's a good question. Actually, Bill and I were talking about that earlier before the, the meeting began, was this, this is perfect in a vacuum. This is, this is a perfect plan if this is the only plan. And you're right. That's, that's why we want to keep the finger on the pulse with you, with your needs. And maybe this is not your only needs between now and 2023. If there is other items that come up, if there are other items, how, how big are those items? If, if I know about these, I do not have to front-end load that bond. I can just make it a normal bond. Or I can front-end load the first two years. And maybe you say, three years from now, we have another need that's going to be coming up. So that'd be fine. I'll, I'll front-load two years and then spread the remaining 13 years nice and flat and smooth to leave you that gap still to fit whatever a project vote might be in 2016 or 17, if that's, if that's the need. So that's, that's exactly why we have these team meetings every, every month, to find out what are your needs. Again, we can stay on notes for a couple of years here. We can do that for five years before we have to switch over and lock into a bond. So that's another reason why there's options open to you. And if you, if you put those items on the table to me, then I have more pieces to work with to help get you the, a nice plan. Because you're right, if, if there's a way we can stay within that line, that's the goal.
Chuck, just a clarification on, in year 2016, we go above that $1.2 million. What does that mean for the public?
Right, the way the existing debt is right now, next year's budget, 15, 16, there's again a slight increase in, in that local share. The way everything's structured, the way the aid's coming in. So that one, again, if, if you need the levy to go up that, you can. If you have some fund balance, some debt service fund that you want to nip that off, you can. So that'll be your choice as you create next year's budget.
Chuck, just to add to that, that's very good. If we use that debt service fund, is there any chance that there'll be an issue with our tax cap moving in as, as we're looking ahead?
Right. What, what the question is that a lot of folks are, are trying to think about that is, again, you have, you have a line, or any school district has a line. What's, what's in your levy cap calculation for local share? And sometimes, a district may at the last minute throw some fund balance or debt service at it, and all of a sudden, you get a big drop. The next year, you may not have that available. Now you've got a big spike. And again, what do you do with that when you've got a little exclusion, then all of a sudden, a big exclusion? Or vice versa. So that's, and it's just like, even if you didn't use it, you got this drop coming up in a couple of years. So it's, it's an, it's an excellent question that you really need to be watching this piece of levy cap. And this is one thing that you can control to some degree as you're looking down the road here. You know, if we were just doing one year at a time and just trying to snapshot that, that's, that's tough because you're bouncing all over. But if you can plan things down the road a few years, that helps smooth it out. That's the key.
So just to, just to conclude on that, there's some, there's some plans and process we can put into place to avoid that and effects to the tax cap?
Right. Right. And again, we have not bonded the prior authorization yet. We're on notes still. So you have that option working for you, too. We can do a hybrid of these two pieces. But right now, the, the prior project, as it was laid out originally, has a, has a flat local share. So we can leave it at that. We can, the timing on this one works out better because the other one's a couple of years old now in terms of borrowings. And our borrowing schedule is getting pretty well set by law. We can't all of a sudden have big front-end loads now or smaller pieces later. But a new project, you can because it's brand new. The, the piece of paper's empty for us. We can do what we need to on that. Again, within the laws, but the other one has already started and, and it's starting to set, kind of like the concrete is starting to set. You can't change it afterwards. Okay, so that's scenario one. We did the same thing with the $5.5 million project. Again, same debt service existing. If you will, go to page 19 as the maturity schedule for that one. And again, what we did was we front-end loaded those first few years. And the right-hand side, the right-hand column, those first few years are up in the $300,000, $400,000 range for local share. And then out in the out-years were around $200,000 or so a year. The prior one, you don't have to flip back, but the prior scenario, those out-years were only in the $20,000 range. A little bit of a difference in the out-years, but that's because you've got another $2.5 million in the authorization. And I cannot fit anything more into the front years because I was already at the cap. So that other $2.5 million has to be in the, the remaining 10 years, let's say. And you'll see that on the bar chart, page 20. Again, those, those green bars in the early years stack on top of the blue, right up to the, the black line. But then those last, what about nine years or so? The green bars are kind of full, regular green bars back then. But you're well, you're well under the line. That, that project, I may not have as much latitude if you say, three years from now, we need to do a, another project. I can downsize the front ones a little bit. But I can't push a lot more out into the out-years at this size. But there'll be some, some degree that I can. Okay, so I don't know if I went through any of that too quickly. I know you're all pretty good pros at this. You've seen it before, so.
I have a question. If we did the $3 million first, thought about the other one. At what point could we plan ahead so that two years from now or three years from now, we could seamlessly fit in the, the second portion?
That's a good question. That'll be harder to do once, let's say, the concrete starts drying, like we are now on the $10 million authorization for the boilers and the athletic because we're a couple of years into it and I have to start setting the principal payments. So if I, if I start setting the, the principal payments, again, front-load to match up to your tax cap level, and then, and it's kind of set that way, and then you add in year three from now, another $2.5 million, I won't, I won't have as many options available to me. I may not be able to, to keep it within the levy cap number. It might spike for those couple of years while we still have those blue bars until it really drops off in '23. So.
Well, I guess I was asking.
It depends how early you tell me.
I was asking if you don't front-load it as much, can't you keep it under the bar as?
Right. What I would do is I would, I would front-load year one, right up to the bar if we can. Year two, up to the bar. And we might say, geez, we'd like to get into bonds now. Maybe the board says, Chuck, let's get into the bond market. Once we get into the bond market, we're locked. Or I might say, geez, do you want to stay on the notes again for another year? But meanwhile, the bond market may be doing something different. So it's, the sooner you know more of the answers, the more I can come up with some options for you. But that's, that's fine. Whenever, whatever answers I am given, you know, we'll, we'll make things fit as best we can.
Chuck, is it safe to say that there's a lot more flexibility in the, in the lower of the two capital projects with regards to future projects? Is that safe?
True. And just the earlier I know what the, the deck of cards is, so to speak, that we have to work with, then we can start fitting the pieces together.
The reason I ask, I'm, I'm concerned about the population decrease. I'm concerned about perhaps redistricting. I'm concerned about where the district will be three years from now and whether or not we need as many buildings, which buildings. Those kind of things are, are a little, to me, iffy at the moment and not, not. Those kind of things are, are a little, to me, iffy at the moment and not, not, and I, I agree with what Kevin said last, at the last meeting. You know, that's our, North Park is our newest elementary building. However, I'd feel better if I knew what the results of a capacity study were before we did that work. I know we have to do the, the middle school work. I mean, they need heat. And I'm a little hesitant to jump right in. And that's why I'm asking, can you phase this? So it's reasonable. And plus, I want to keep. It seems, seems like the local share front-loaded will be more and maybe not. I'm not looking at this thing. But I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about doing two projects at once.
Yeah. If, if you need another year, and you're right, those are other concerns that are even beyond what, what I focus on for you, but that you all deal with. So if I can know what that second piece is, if there is a second piece within a year, that's fine. I should certainly still be able to fit it in. If it's two or three years down the road, now I'm getting into the time periods where I have to start making principal payments under the local finance law rules to stay in compliance with, with everything. So it get, it may get harder for me two, three years or more down the road. But if it's within a year, that should still be fine.
I think there's another dynamic here that I don't have a good grasp on. So in the, the graphs, you've got a black line that is effectively representing a steady state debt service threshold that we're trying to maintain. And that's linked to the tax cap formula. So I'm trying to recall what happens if we adjust or change that number. So for example, if it, if it goes up, does that mean that, or is that, that the absolute limit? So please, please help me understand that.
Yes. And, and I thought about that too. And if the question came up, I was going to try to go through a real simple example. Forget these numbers here. Let's just say a district, not you. Any, any, any district has a $1 million levy, $1 million. So as you're doing tax cap calculation, you have the current year and the upcoming year in terms of the calculations. I don't know if you've kind of walked through the formula, but you start with the current year levy, $1 million. You subtract out the local share that was in that levy for the building projects. Let's say that's $200,000. So you're down to 800,000. Then you do your multiplication with the, the increase and the growth factor. And I know there's pilots and TRS. Let's leave that stuff out of it for now. And let's say all those, those factors were 0%. So no change. So you take your million, subtract out 200,000, you're down to 800,000 as your new base. Now we say, geez, our, our local share dropped $100,000. So the next year's local share is only 100,000. Went from 200,000, down 100,000 to 100,000. So that's our new local share. We get to add that back in to the 800,000. Now we're up to 900,000. That is our new levy limit. Last year's levy was $1 million. Subtracted out 200, added in 100 for this upcoming year. Our new levy limit is $900,000. It's less. That's where you start. Let's say there's no other changes in operating costs, up or down. That's what you need for your, your 50% majority vote. Let's say you had other increases and you said, geez, we need $910,000. You have to go get a super majority now. Your levy's less than what it was last year. You need a super majority. That's, that's the intricacies of tax cap.
So to rephrase what I think I just heard, if the local share decreases.
From one year to the next, yep.
That means that our tax cap also decreases.
Correct.
And so therefore, if we only kept a flat budget from year to year, but the local share decreased, then we would have to make cuts in program because the local share decreased.
You wouldn't necessarily be able to raise it. Unless you wanted to get the super majority. So it's, you, you get a very interesting handcuff going on if, if you cannot maintain a, a local share. When you have an increase to the local share on a project because there's a new project vote and everybody voted it or approved it, then that's understandable. You might have a 2% increase just because of the project, and that's excludable. And then maybe there's another 2% increase because of operations, but you have in total a 4% increase. But that only needs the simple majority, the 50%, even though you're above kind of a standard 2% tax cap sort of number that year. But you had a big exclusion that year. So the reverse can hurt on the way down, so to speak. So it's, it's very good to be thinking these pieces through on that.
So I think my next question might be for Wayne more than for you. But I think the, the important thing for me, the oversimplified thing I need to keep in mind is that we need to maintain our debt service at a very stable level so that it doesn't adversely affect our tax cap.
And that's part of what we've been working on together is to ensure that that's the case. There was one example where we would, as Chuck said, just increase the local share, which would be an increase in the budget. So it's, it's reciprocal. It's either, you know, your tax levy goes, you know, your tax cap goes up, down, and your ability to tax obviously goes down with it. Or your budget goes up and, you know, it's just a reverse situation. So what we're working on doing is pairing it just right to make sure that there's no local levy. The only other option that Chuck mentioned with me is that we wait two winters, which is not what the district is, is looking to do. We're trying to, you know, crossing our fingers for year one and, and really get that work started the following season for, for the second winter. So there's a lot of things to, to think about.
Good questions. Thank you.
I got a question from Bill. Sorry, I, I was waiting.
Are we, are we, are we done with the financial presentation?
I think we're good.
I see a lot of DX coils at North Park.
Yep.
Did we consider heat pumps, considering half of our winter is well within the zone, the range of a heat pump? And it is much cheaper to operate?
I, I, I cannot answer that. I'll, I'll go back to my engineer and I'll have that for the next meeting as a question.
It won't matter to me.
Okay.
But I do want to say that if we have the opportunity to put the heat pumps in there and we don't, we failed. And the other minor question I had was about Havland. None of this should affect SHIPA at all, should it?
No.
I didn't think so, because we're not messing with the C-Second.
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Explain your acronym, SHIPA?
SHIPA is the State Historic Preservation. The group that, remember when we did the window job and we had to do that whole big report and explain to them why you had to replace the old windows? So.
And that doesn't apply to the A, the B, and the A1 section?
No, because, and again, it's, it's the heating system, which they understand is basically inside the belly of the building.
But I, I didn't think anything historical mattered over there. Am I incorrect?
Well, the, the problem is, is they don't, they designate buildings that are over 50 years old. So the A Wing and the B Wing are both over 50 years old.
It didn't have the fact that Roosevelt didn't stand there matter?
No, that one, we matter. Yeah. So we, I still have, I still have to explain to them, even though it's over 50 years, why it's exempt because there's a process with the state that you can do on certain things that's exempt. And I have to send them pictures of the building and show them there's really no historic.
Yeah. The only, the only historical about that building is how not to build a building.
Exactly.
It's a good example.
Absolutely. So if you could look into that.
I'll look into the heat pumps. Good idea. Yes.
We would be doing that's a great service, I think, in the future.
Glenn, just if I could clarify, when you're talking heat pumps, are you talking air source or ground source?
Air. We're using DX coils in all those classrooms?
I was actually thinking, wouldn't this be a great place to be looking at geothermal? I mean, if we're looking.
We're talking about quadrupling the cost.
Well, I think it should be at least explained, you know, explored. I mean, here's the situation. I mean, the greatest payback on ground source heat pump is when you're looking at both heating and cooling.
Absolutely.
And, and that's where we are with this. So I would at least want to see some numbers run to.
You get a wider
I think we're going to have time.
Usage of time or.
Yeah, you could use it all year long.
Yeah, 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 than air.
Yeah, you can pay back year round.
You might be able to eliminate some of the other heat. But that, that is definitely another aspect to look into.
Okay.
While you're there, Bill, just look, looking at schedule, I mean, I think you go November.
Which, which building? It doesn't matter?
I'm looking at your SED approval for.
Say Havland? Okay.
You're looking at November through April.
Yes.
Process.
Yes. And I'm, what I'm thinking, what we're, what I would do, and like I said, I was explaining that this is worst-case scenario, all right? Based on their current timeline. And what I would do is I would go to call and explain the, the need, okay? And the issue and appeal to him to at least accelerate the review time. If we can accelerate the review time, it'll just, it'll be better. But I didn't want to promise something that I, we don't have anything signed off on because he also wants to know what the plan is when I explain it to him.
Okay. I, I actually was a little concerned. I thought that it was even, I won't say aggressive, but you're looking at, what, 26 weeks review time? Which is where they are today.
Yep.
I don't know, is it growing or not? They certainly aren't, certainly aren't getting any more staff there, it appears, to do reviews. So. And this is going to be.
The other thing, what we're doing as part of this plan, it's, it's, it's in a more detailed schedule that I provided, is I would set the, I would put it out to bid before I had final SED approval.
But not award until after you've.
You can't award until you have SED approval.
Yeah. I would just want to also look at, you know, what happens if, if it takes 30 weeks.
Every, every month, you, it would just start to slide.
Pushes it out.
Pushes it out. Because the big thing, the big issue there on Havland Middle School, again, is the lead time for the unit vents and any of the rooftop units, stuff that we're changing.
Right.
All the piping issues, we're figuring as far as communicating with Palumbo, we're doing that during the summer. And we're just waiting for the unit vents to show up. And then I say, like I'm saying with the, and we concentrate on the A and the B Wing because those are basically swap-outs. The primary A Wing, which has the hot air, would be the one that we can, you can continue using that system while the other one's being phased in.
You're putting it in parallel to the existing system. Yeah. So ultimately, you could end up, and I haven't looked at the schedule that much, you could end up being, working nights and weekends through the school year, as part of the school year.
That's what I built into this project. I built in the cost that September, October, November, they're working at nights.
Okay. Okay. Speaking of costs, who, who has developed the budget at this point? Was Palumbo involved with the budget development or is this?
This has basically been through us.
Okay.
I'm still a little uncomfortable about, about doing this work at North Park, especially if they're seeing the numbers here. What I haven't seen or heard, I've heard conclusion of what the problem is and how to correct the problem. But I haven't seen any summaries from any environmental specialists. I've seen lab reports with no analyst on them. I'd like to find more out about this condition there.
That's.
Before we proceed.
That's it. Elliot's done all of that, that work. Now, one thing which came up as a question that Elliot raised after we finished the report and we actually have kicked around a little bit, is North Park can actually be phased. And the idea that basically we came up with, and we haven't put any numbers or anything to this, is that at North Park, first of all, the gym and cafeteria are separate units. So you could do those units or not do those units, all right, to, to, to deal with the humidity there. The big issue is dealing with the humidity that comes in from the classroom and then it gets dumped into that hallway. And that hallway, because it's terrazzo, is what really got, gets really wet because it's got a cold slab underneath it also. And that's where you get a lot of that condensation going on. So the other thought is, what we could do is we could actually just do the hallways, all right? I would shut off the air exchange from the classrooms into the hallway because now I'll put the new exchange going through the roof, which is the way the state really wants you to do it. And therefore, we could at least eliminate the humidity problem in the hallways. And we could actually even scale it down another step. That any of those rooftop units are dealing with the hallways, we would build into it space for the cooling coil and just handle increased airflow in the hallway. And plus, like I said, we're eliminating the humid air that's being drawn in from the unit vents into the classroom, into the space, eliminate that. We would eliminate, we believe, the humidity issue, or majority of it, in the hallway as step one, right? And that will be a significantly reduced price. Then at a later date, you could decide, now we want to do the classrooms and now we want to do, put the DX coils in there and we want to do all this other stuff. So there is a way that you could.
It's starting to make sense to me now, what you just said, yeah.
Right?
I'd like to see some numbers on, on that.
Okay. So I figure for the next July meeting, we would come back with this kind of phased idea, right? That would allow you to nip it, nip that one, North Park, in maybe little pieces to deal with it.
So I don't know how much conversation we have here now, but I am actively opposed to doing any work, work on North Park as part of this capital project.
I am now too.
I don't see any point in exploring that any further and paying for work to explore that. If and when we're going to do work on that, it should be considered as part of what we all know is coming. And that is conversation about redistricting or closing another building. Furthermore, I'm not comfortable saddling the, the district with that much more debt at this time. I'm comfortable with the $2.8 million number going out for a vote, but not a $6 million number. So I, I, I don't know the process of the correct procedure here at this point, but I don't want to hear more about North Park at the July meeting.
I think I've heard from a couple of board members and, I don't know, I think we can maybe do a show of hands. Should we, should we just commit now to moving forward with Havland and put North Park in the mix for all the other things that need to be considered?
I think we have to do Havland. I don't think we have to do North Park this year. So I would be in favor of just doing the Havland project.
I could support that. I mean, North Park has been like that forever. We've had, what, a day where it was wet? So.
Okay. Any other comments? Is there anything official that we have to do, Wayne, to?
I was going to say on the timeline with regards to the resolution, that, you know, that would be the next step. They would be answering questions for the next meeting in July 8th, is it?
Yes.
The Oregon meeting. So some of the, some of the questions that came up, that Bill will come back with answers or things pop up that you email to us between now and then certainly, you know, get to us.
But I think the question is, do we continue exploring North Park? I mean, we don't want to have Bill chasing down North Park questions.
I think that we, we just write the resolution for middle school and that's, that's our next step.
So we're good with that?
Let me ask a question here. Where, where's Elliot? There you are. So, I mean, we, we have issues at North Park and it appears that we're dealing with them from a maintenance standpoint. Do we see a problem being able to continue maintaining it, dealing with them from a maintenance standpoint? Is there anything that, where you feel like you're losing ground or, and I know that we're not, you know, we're, we're probably, we're going into the time of year when it probably is worse.
Yeah. It, it generally, you know, historically was worse in August, September, at the end of the summer months rather than the beginning. Right now, we're, I'm sorry, oh, right now, we're managing as best we can. Our, our observed data is keeping us right around or just under that 60% mark in terms of relative humidity. But I do want to note that I did manage this issue when it got to its worst with twice as much equipment last year than I do have on hand right now. We had to bring in supplemental rental equipment to augment what we did purchase. So if we're not going to look for a permanent solution, I'm going to have to plan for the rather sizable equipment purchase to have enough properly sized equipment to manage this as we can foresee it getting worse through the summer months.
And when we, we're not having anybody there this summer. So it would just be September issue.
We have camping mentioned this summer. We have camping mentioned this summer, during the August months.
Maybe we should consider a different location?
Well, one of the issues for us, just to clarify, is whether we have people there or not. The ambient humidity has been shown about 10% higher at that building than other buildings tested as, as recently as yesterday.
Right.
So we've been going around the district tracking. We have data loggers throughout the district to actually provide the board with a comparative analysis of relative humidity, both inside and outside of the buildings, with temperature numbers as well, for all the extreme ends of the district, North Park, FDR, Netherwood, and Violet Avenue. So, again, to answer your question, can we manage it? We can. I'll kind of reframe what I said last, at the last meeting. It's very reactive, and it's a moving target, but I would need probably five more dehumidifiers at minimum to, to keep putting the Band-Aid on it and try to keep the levels within range. Even if the building's unoccupied, if it's excessively moist for a long enough period, we can still foster mold growth.
Right, right.
And damage our building materials and our building envelope, which is really what we're trying to protect the asset.
Right. Sorry.
Elliot, at this point, is all your ventilation equipment working?
Yes, sir.
Or is your.
At North Park, our ventilation equipment is working. The unit vents themselves, for the heating units, some of them, the outside air dampers have been blocked off, as you saw when you had the, the board meeting over there, but that's more for in-room exchange. Our central exhaust system is running. We've tested it. We've, and again, some of the data is preliminary, so I really don't want to get into too much detail, but some of the data has shown that our interior humidity levels actually spike once the ventilation system kicks in. So we have some empirical evidence, and we're building the data to support the theory that over-ventilating the building is increasing the amount of moisture coming in, so that's not really helping us either, but we do have enough air movement by code, and actually, the building's overly pressurized. So most of our, our large-size fans and our fans in our public assembly areas are working.
Okay. And you're, you're kind of ignoring your energy schedule there, hopefully, to keep everything operating more consistently than the, the other buildings.
Yes, sir. We extended the ventilation schedule at that building. What we actually did, because of the way the system is configured, it's not, we're not able to separate exhaust and ventilation from heat. So we had to go in and manually disable all of the heating equipment, and then run the building as if it was occupied in the dead of winter, to bring all the ventilation equipment online as scheduled. We've bookended the school day to come on before the kids get there, to get the air flowing, and we keep them on, is it three to four hours, I believe, Jill, after school day's over? Yeah, so we're keeping it on till right about 6:00, 7:00 PM, and that's to allow our cleaning crews to come in, and they're adding water to the building essentially by mopping bathrooms and, and cleaning spaces, so we want to keep the air on active exhaust until they're done with the wet part of their cleaning schedule.
Elliot, with the increased awareness of, of this condition and the high moisture season coming up, is there, do we have systems and process in place for checking this more regularly?
We have daily inspections and log sheets issued to our custodial workers to track the usage of dehumidifiers. Our energy specialist has been tracking the humidity at that building and other buildings to create kind of a baseline comparison. Since the spring really kicked in, since we started to experience moisture levels above about 40%, and we're checking it. I was out in the district yesterday for a couple hours, just spot-checking buildings, seeing how we compare. I have some data in my folders there, but essentially, where we're seeing high 40s and low 50s at other buildings, we're in the mid 60s to the low 60s at North Park. So it's trending, and our handheld devices, our, our long-term tracking devices are all showing that North Park is a bit higher at all times throughout the day, and we are educating our custodial staff to kind of report back to us when they're experiencing the symptoms of what they already know to be excessive moisture in their building.
And the last clarification is that last year, that building was closed up because of the capital work that was being done, which is not the case this year. Does that have any?
That's correct. Part of the capital work last summer required abatement. Abatements by nature require tented and confined enclosed spaces. So we were not able to ventilate large portions of that building for days and weeks at a time. So I, I can't say that there's a direct correlation, but it definitely could contribute to our inability to ventilate the building.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
I, just, just a point, and I mentioned it to you before. I really believe, and I asked the board that we go through with this, if we get an industrial hygienist there to review all the reports, review the building, review the ventilation, and give us a summary of what their findings are.
I did try to send you the files, they were too big to get through the Gmail, so if we can hook up at some point, I can give you some printouts or a flash drive. What's that?
A summary wouldn't be that big.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying.
But if you use an industrial hygienist, that's their focus on environmental issue. And I mean, where we are now, what we're spending, and what the future brings, I mean, I think we need to bring somebody in.
It can be done. The professionals that we had, we've had our Dutchess County, ABOC's Health and Safety Coordinators run our testing, as far as air testing.
With all due respect, they're not.
I'm just expressing what was already done. And the gentleman that we did bring in did our testing with a professional lab. We also brought in a professional hydrogeologist to look at the environmental factors specifically, and he gave us a multi-page report citing all of the things that we looked at, from groundwater to the adjacent water bodies, to the type of plant life around the building, the building envelope. He went down into our pipe tunnels to look for subterranean cause, and, you know, helped us come to our conclusion. So I can put all that together for any expert that we choose to develop.
I think he's asking for something diff, new moving forward. Right? So are you asking for a, a summary of what was done, or to have a specialist come in and?
I haven't seen a summary of what was done. I've seen the lab reports and results, but no summary that goes along with it, them and identifies different issues, which we mentioned that you have. But I think we need a new, new person in there, or company in there, to review all that you've done, and all that you have documented, and the conditions of the building, and see if we're comparing the same thing or doing, going in, going in the right direction, anyway.
Okay.
Well, I would add to that. I think it would be good, if you, if you've got a question, if you're interested in, rather than just bringing somebody else in to perhaps go over the same thing that we've already paid somebody to do, why don't we take a look at what it is? I'd be interested, maybe the best thing is, if you can burn it onto a few CDs, or, or give, you know, hand out some thumb drives with it, I'd be willing to leaf through whatever the documentation is, and whatever summaries they've provided. And I mean, I think, you know, certainly, you know, there's, you know, an industrial hygienist can, you know, has a certain skill path that they'll go through, and a process that they'll go through to evaluate it, but if you got, if you've already had a hydrogeologist looking at it, that, that's actually a big part of what the, I mean, the hygienist is going to deal with it once it gets into the building. The geologist is trying to find out how it got into the building, I mean, which is perhaps even better at root cause. So I, I think, before I could support going out and having another study done, I think we ought to make sure that we're, we're fully reviewing what we've got, and if there's voids there that we want to identify, then perhaps we go out and hire more service. Until I've seen it, I, I don't know, can, how do you make that determination? We need more until you see what you've got.
Well, I think we were too focused on the site itself. I don't know how much focus you put on the, on the building system when all this problem occurred, or still occurs.
Well, that.
Now, I know you look for leaks and piping and.
That particular building system's one of our best systems as a whole. It has issues at the unit vent level, at the device level, but as far as a system, that boiler's only 10 years old.
Well, I'm talking about water penetrations.
We, the roof is, I believe Tetra Tech did that roof at North Park, right?
Well, you can have a new roof, but you can still have some bad drainage.
Understandable.
Things like that, that.
But what I can do is.
You can't physically see, but they're in there internally, so I'd like to have a little better study.
Sure. Well, some of the things that we did was, we did surface moisture readings as well with, to see if there was spikes in any of the baseboards or surfaces. So what I can do is, I can take all the documents, I'll talk to Forrest, see if I can share it as a Google folder, since everybody has a Google account. If we can't send it through email, at least if I can share the folder, I'll put everything in one spot. I'll share that folder with the board. And then anybody that wants to see it, I'll put the board and the administration on the share list, and you'll all be able to dial in and see all the documents that I've collected on the topic from last summer to now. And then we can probably revisit this in, in some sort of committee discussion or another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's great, and I'd like to.
Let me, I just have one other comment, and it goes to Bernie's, or not Bernie, but Chuck's point in looking at where we are in capital projects from here and going forward. And, and we would have serious blinders on if we thought that what we know today, or what we're looking at today, is the only thing that we're going to have to work on in the very near future. I mean, there's been a lot of effort that went into developing a facilities assessment, and we're coming up on a building condition survey to be done in 2015. I think we need to start looking at some serious, long-range planning here for capital projects. I mean, we've got, we've got buildings that are, you know, aging all around us. You know, I think we've got probably bigger capital issues than what we're even looking at today, coming up within the next five years. So somehow, we need to get some, some traction on that to, to get ourselves in a better place.
Well, I mean, looking from not quite the outside in, it seems like we work up building plans, and then things come up, and then we don't follow it. I mean, just the.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like we had a plan, and then we had, all of a sudden, we had problems at the middle school, and then problems at North Park, which I don't think was really discussed in the facilities planning, right? What's, what I heard, anyway.
North Park, Wayne, and the facilities.
Yeah.
Just to let you know, we're not unique to that either.
Right. Well, I will, I will say that the five-year facilities plan is comprehensive. The reason why we're here doing this is that the, what we originally thought we could phase in with the heat at Havilland, we can't. We put North Park in for consideration because it was another HVAC consideration, but I think there's just too many other mitigating factors right now for North Park. I think we're fully prepared to say, let, we just had our final five-year facility study report. We're having the building condition, so we are at that point to say, what's our plan for the long term? But I honestly don't think that that Havilland heat can wait even another year.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting anything, Wayne.
Okay. But I didn't, I didn't want it, the perception to be that, you know, we just finished the five-year facilities plan. It's a good plan. Where we will be this year, once you finish the five-year facilities plan and we have the building condition, is to start to say, okay, you know, when do we do the project, projects? What's our next big crap, capital project? So I think we're right on target there. This is just one that, I just felt we needed to pull this one out, and not even wait till next year to say, let's get, you know, as part of our facilities planning, we know we just concluded our five-year report, what's the scope of the next project? And then, you know, you have the whole stated timeline. So I think we're in good shape, and you've been tremendous in the facilities.
My point is, we've collected a lot of information, but unless we do something with it, all we've got is a file cabinet full of, of great information and buildings coming down around our ears.
Right. But the, but what the district does have a nice history of is concluding our facilities study and then acting on it, and that is what we've been doing for the past, I don't know, 10 years. And so, you know, I, I think we're pretty confident that we have not just done the studies and left them on the shelf.
Yeah.
We, we have a good track record of the last 10 years of really being proactive. It does seem to be a little bit of a lag. We just presented the five-year, the five-year facilities plan, what, in February? And, but again, you know, this, the heat needed to be pulled out. So, I think, I think we'll, we'll get there, and it just means that with North Park, instead of being part of this emergency mix, it's where it should be in the whole five-year facilities plan, and. Yeah.
Well, it has to be added. I mean, it's not in there.
It, it was added to the master facilities plan last year after the issues of last summer did come up.
Yeah, it was immediately added, especially after the critical state that it got into, and, you know.
Yeah. And it should be posted, right? Is the updated plan posted?
It was part of the 1A summary that was presented to the board, did include the North Park central dehumidification system.
Right. What I'm, what I'm saying, I don't think you discussed a, a project of that size. Almost $3 million.
I was as surprised as, as you are sitting here, like, when I saw that, I got sticker shock. Like, you know, I, I thought it was more of a, a simple fix. I think Elliot felt the same way, until, you know, Bill did the actual research on, on the project itself.
It's a surprise to me.
It is.
Oh, the, the scope, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it was bad news, really.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else, since we absolutely destroyed my 10-minute rule? It's just like, done, you know?
Sometimes things take more than 10 minutes.
No, it's pretty quick.
Yeah.
The expensive stuff always does.
All right, let's, let's move on. We'll do the district leadership.
So I think Bill needs a little direction, too.
Yeah, I need a little direction. Is there?
So no North Park.
Havilland only at this point, right?
Havilland only.
Okay.
Havilland only.
So between now and July, if you have any questions, you're going to feed them through Elliot and Wayne, and then when I'm back here in July.
Okay.
You can ask me more questions. Okay?
On Havilland. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay. I'll go quickly, although not to, am I going in the right direction? No.
Yep.
Okay. We reconvened the district leadership team. I won't go into the history. We've done several iterations, but we did meet this year, and I think we, we laid a good foundation and certainly have a lot of room to grow. I don't need to read our mission statement. I'm actually going to skip to the next slide, but you all have this, and it's posted. This is a list of the people who signed up to be on the committee. And this is a breakdown of who they represent. And the interesting thing is, we had great parent representation, but I did have to divide or separate that there were two, there were five non-employees, meaning they don't substitute, they don't work for the district. Very different perspective when you are not in the buildings on a regular or semi-regular basis. So you always want to make sure that you have a good handful of parents that do not work in the building. So we had a mix, and five parents, in fact, we have one of them here tonight. We have two that were on the committee. Robin. Robin was one of our not, doesn't get any paycheck from the district, so, thank you, Robin. But five non-employee parents were good. Certainly, the employee parents just as valuable, but as part of the whole makeup of what you look at for district leadership team, you want that. We had two central office people, that was Aviva and myself. And then we had two representatives from our administrative team, but they, for one reason or another, they only attended the first meeting, and at the last meeting, it was expressed that we really need a building principals, at least a building principal, and we had two who were signed up, and we definitely need to bring them back. We had three members from the Hyde Park Teachers Association. Now, in the HPUE and CSEA, we actually had somebody from the unit, but it wasn't official. Their unit didn't say they are officially representing us. So we'll try and get, work with the HPUE and the CSEA. We certainly sent out plenty of invites, and again, we have people there, but nobody who is the official rep for those units. And again, we're trying to follow the structure of 100.11, where you go through the bargaining units and you ask for representatives. So we did have one HPUE rep, but, one HPUE person, but not an official rep. This is just the 100.11 Plan for Shared Decision Making that guides our practice. Some of the initiatives, we actually updated the district plan for shared decision-making. We initiated a process of building a culture of community engagement through surveys mostly at this point, and reach out to RICAC, and we'll be building on that. We did work with K-12 Insight to review the survey, survey process, focus group results, and communication plans, and we certainly discussed membership issues, wanting to fill in our gaps and get reps from all the areas. Some of the recommendations that came out of our meeting this year, a lot of great input on if we're going to continue with some surveys. One of, one input was, don't just survey the teachers, survey all staff. Great recommendation. A lot of conversations about differentiating between elementary, middle, and high schools, especially for students and parents who, you know, instead of answering about your teacher when you have seven. We want to continue to increase participation. I will, you do need to note that for the DTSTE, the district, whatever, the tool, the diagnostic tool for district education or something, we had 500 and. diagnostic tool for district education or something, we had 565 respondents. When we did the parent involvement survey this year, it increased to 718. That is significant. We have 3,600 students, we had 718 parents respond, that's phenomenal. We want to continue to grow in that area. In the DTSTE survey, we had a very low teacher turnout, we addressed a lot of that, K-12 Insight helped us with that. We need to address some of the confidentiality concerns, some of the, just building the culture and getting more teachers to participate. We need to provide onsite access, and maybe really celebrate that, and say, here's a night or an afternoon, you can come into our labs and fill out the surveys, and provide a Spanish option, which is also part of our focus review recommendation. We're committed to publishing and communicating actions taken as a result of the survey data. You'll notice that even in Melissa's presentation and in every other building presentation, they all have a building leadership team, they all utilize the surveys to set goals, which is exactly what you want. And at our last meeting, we talked about, we really need to take all of the work that's being done on the surveys, and really great work. So when Melissa reports tonight that as a result of her building leadership team looking at the survey, they determined they wanted to make videos on our math common core to have as a parent resource, that's an action taken in direct results of the survey. So we're taking the survey information and acting on it, so we need to consolidate it into one area and really publicize. We heard what you had to say, we've taken your feedback, and this is how it's helping our improvement initiative. So for the first year of a district leadership team of this iteration, because you all know we've done a couple, we really did some good work with very few meetings, and we had a solid core of people that regularly attended. We want a tighter, another recommendation is a tighter link to the building leadership teams. One of the survey results was that most of our parents have no clue that we even have building leadership teams, so we need to promote that and really advertise that. And we had one focus group session this spring on community use of our facilities. The district leadership team heard the informal results, we should have formal results very soon, and next year, we want to, we're thinking of having one on communication initiatives. So we need to follow up on the community use of facilities as soon as we get the report and we meet again in the fall. We want to conduct a second DTSTE survey so that we can measure growth, and review the report that our DTSTE review at Haviland Middle School and the high school, they've left us with a district report, a report for the high school, we're still waiting on the report for the middle school. When the report comes in, the district leadership team will also review those reports, and we'd like to attempt to have a joint meeting, maybe at the end of the year, a celebratory meeting where the district leadership team gets together with the building leadership team, and we share, what were your goals, and how did you, how did you, what was your progress in achieving those goals? There. Does that 10 minutes or less? I hope.
There you go.
So I'll take questions, we'll certainly follow up in the fall.
Okay, any, any questions? No, we're all questioned out. Okay. Update on end of year budget transfers?
Sure. So there were some questions on the budget transfers on the 612/14 agenda. Fortunately, I wasn't able to be here to answer those, so those were shared with me. Just so, for the folks out in the community, what is a budget transfer? It's moving from funds, dollars, from one budget code to another, simple concept. At the end of the year, why are there more? And, you know, the reason for that is we're wrapping up all the year's finance, and the codes begin to show, you know, where either efficiencies were made or deficiencies in some cases. There are three specific transfers on the agenda, one for fuel oil, one for bus drivers overtime, and one for retirement incentive, and these budget transfers come in handy because there's unanticipated things that could happen in the budget. And for fuel oil, we had the coldest winter on record, and we also had our heating issues, and we were running heat at the top speed, you know, all the time for at least a couple months, so you can imagine our bills got a lot higher there. We usually do add contingency that's into our fuel, fuel oil code, so we used that up, and then we had to go find out, get more. Had asked Elliot to use funds that he had left over and any codes that were heat made efficiencies, and then I utilized from the, I'm sorry, the, it was the health insurance buyback there that we received. But anyway, so, the second one was bus drivers OT, and on that, on that specific one, the overtime was because of several long-term leave absences that we couldn't have expected to happen, so in order to make up for those people, we had to use a lot of overtime and people in the office to drive. Retirement incentive, this was an extraordinary amount of retirees this year at the end of 1314, more than I've ever seen, more than I've ever seen, so we have to pay out, and it has to be in 1314 school year, because it's a 1314 expense, and we have to recognize that, so I had to move the money for accounting purposes. And then, you know, the, the real premise of the questions, as, as I spoke with a couple of board members, is what's the funding mechanism for the budget transfer? And budgets are built with room for unknown expenses, you have to, there's no way we can run a budget without it. You'll see the next presentation that Cora makes, we learned just a couple weeks ago that we're not going to have summer school, where we normally had it for many, many years, and where those funds come from, so there's a perfect example. But contingencies are built all over the budget, whether it's personnel, a perfect example of that are people that go out on leaves for medical reasons or for any other reason, pregnancies, and all different wonderful, good things and bad things. But we have to have, we have to pay that employee, and we also have to pay the person that comes in to work in their absence. So again, we have contingencies built in transportation and fuel, we have contingencies built in facilities and options, they've certainly reduced throughout the years, but they do exist. The reason why we've been using the DHEC health insurance premium give back is because it's a large amount, and it was a good place to find money. So, any questions?
Okay, since I'm the one that asked the question in the last meeting, Wayne and I did talk earlier, and I understand now, I guess you can't really have a line item that says, money just in case something happens, and so certain line items have a little extra in them in order to handle these type of things, so I'm glad you're stating that out, and I certainly learned a little, so that's, that's really good, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, Cora?
Whoever wants to start.
Oh, well, we can certainly pass it, because Wayne's already laid the groundwork, so I'll just chip it over.
Okay. Well, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, and I will be under 10 minutes, but as Wayne indicated, we learned just within the last two weeks that our students have no place to go for summer school. In the past, years and years ago, long before my time, Hyde Park had a summer school program for the high school, has not had in at least the last 10 years, and our students have attended either Arlington or Poughkeepsie High School or Lord's. And the information that we have is that none of those districts will be affording our students the opportunity for summer school. So rather quickly, we've done some work and would like to recommend that the board support the creation of a summer school program for this year. And basically, as you know, we do a two-week summer regents prep program in August, which is for students who have passed their course but just need to retake the regents exam. And we've had relative success with that, some very good success, and some courses or years where we've had less success perhaps than we would hope. But for the purpose of summer school, our goal would be to extend that program by a week, so students would have three weeks of program prior to the regents exam. The students come now from 8:30 to 11:30 in the morning, Monday through Friday, that would be the same schedule, but again, they would have that additional time. The State Education Department actually allows as few as 20 hours over the summer for summer school, and as many as 90 hours, depending on needs and program development. So while it could be argued that our current summer regents prep program already has 20 hours in it, our recommendation is that for the students who need this credit recovery, we really need to do something more and something different. So at this point, my recommendation is that we staff approximately five sections, and I say approximately because Dan Cowan and I are in the process now of looking at recommendations for summer regents prep, Dan being the person who ran that program so well last year, and I've been working with guidance on examining all of the data on failures, and as you know, some of that data has only come to us in the last couple of days. So I did forward the board a proposal with some data outlined in it relative to failures and numbers of students at each grade level who are failing three or more courses, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions about that. My hope would be that if the board can support a recommendation for a program with approximate costs of $25,000, that would cover stipends for five teachers, it would cover the requirement that summer school have a library media specialist on staff, and given the number of students that may participate, my recommendation is that there be a nurse on staff as well. That $25,000 does not include funds for transportation. However, I would strongly recommend that we talk about finding the funding for transportation as well, and the primary reason for that would be equity of access to the program. Many of our students, as you know, are students who are receiving free and reduced lunch, may or may not have the availability of someone to bring them to school. We are already running buses during the three weeks that summer school would be in place because we are running our summer bridge program, so there's enough overlap that while I can't give you a figure right now, I do know that it would be less than what it would be if we were running brand-new buses and routes that have never been run before. The $25,000 is a little bit higher than the email that I sent you with the proposal because we wanted to build in just a very modest amount for supplies. I'm happy to answer all the questions that I'm sure you have.
First of all, I think this is a problem that we have to do. We need students to have the opportunity to graduate with their class, or right after their class graduates. I have one question. Would we open this to students from other districts?
Not. My recommendation at this time would be that this year, we focus on our students.
Okay.
That's a great, great idea to help in the future, but with a couple of weeks to plan, yeah, but that's a great suggestion.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Cora, I'm just wondering about your list of students with multiple failures. Grade nine is a lot higher than the other levels.
Yes, and that's typical, actually, yes. It's not something that we like, but it's not unusual for the highest failure rate to be in the ninth grade year.
Transition.
Transition is big, so yes, while that's unsettling, it's not unusual.
When would the program start?
We would propose starting August, no, sorry, July, July 21st.
Okay, so we have another meeting before?
We do, yes, and thank you for that, Kevin, yes. Our, our hope would be that if we have support tonight, we would create a resolution for the July reorg, and I would post the anticipation of those positions, so that with the board's permission, we would both create the program and appoint employees at the same meeting.
Okay.
But yes, July 21st would be the anticipated start date.
Sounds good.
And as we said, we would take the funds out of the code that we have for leaves.
Okay.
Do you have a ballpark, ballpark number in mind for transportation, if we extended it for the full program?
I don't off the top of my head. Our plan would be to do what we do for our elementary summer bridge program, which is when we send information and registration packets, we ask families if they want transportation. Greer and I spoke, we have students who drive to school during the school year, we would allow them to do that during the summer. If parents are able to transport, we'd certainly be happy about that, but our, our goal would be to provide transportation to any family in need.
We also talked about one creative idea, I'll just be brave enough to say.
Sure, go for it.
Actually, especially since it was maybe my bright idea, that might not be so bright, but we don't know, we're exploring, since we have the buses running anyway, and if you're in the city and you're a kid, you're taking a bus with kids from every age, so we did explore, well, is it more cost-effective to make sure that the buses that we run, that pick up, that could pick up all the kids for the elementary program and the high school program, make sure they're the ones that have the functioning cameras? Is it more cost-effective to put an aide on the bus, just to make sure that, you know, okay, high school kids sit in the back, little kids sit in the front, and have those, have the high school students sign a waiver that they're going to behave on the bus in front of elementary kids? I mean, it's, it's, if you live in New York City, you're, you're...
You don't throw you out of the program.
Right, you get, you know, so it could be very cost-effective, and, you know...
It's also an opportunity for some of our high school kids.
Yeah, right.
To be with younger kids and be mentors and models, and some of them just need that invitation.
Right, so, we're kicking that idea around.
I'm not imagining you'd have huge numbers anyway, and, you know, stupidity comes with large numbers, so probably most will behave themselves and, you know, just mind their own business in the back of the bus, and...
Right, and as long as we have a way to monitor that and handle that situation, I, I don't...
And the same code of conduct that we use during the school year would apply during the summer, so...
Absolutely, yeah, you don't behave, you don't...
One could be suspended from the bus if necessary.
Right, so...
I'm sure there was some calculation I could do here to figure out, but how many students do you think we're talking about?
Well, what I hope is that in each class, we stay around the 15 to 17 number.
Okay.
In five sessions.
Can you say five?
Yep, and that's in addition to the students who come to summer regents prep.
And some of those would be, so would it be one, would all five sessions be operating at the same time?
Right.
So would any student be able to take two different sessions?
Good question. As I'm working with guidance and looking at students who might attend, we're trying to be a little bit flexible until we have more information about student needs. Our initial plan is to have the schedule run in the same way, so 8:30 to 11:30 or 9:00 to noon, but if we do that, it, it does have implications for students who might need more than one course. If we run different times, and that has implications for transportation, so because of the emergency nature of this, my answer to that isn't secure yet.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, again, ninth grade that has 25 with multiple failures, what does it mean if a student can only take one session in one class?
Right, yeah, some of those students...
Or worse yet, maybe the 12th grader.
Right.
Four 12th graders that need two classes, and I'm assuming that means two classes to graduate?
Not necessarily. Some of those students, this is, for example, a 12th grade, four students who have multiple failures. Not all of those failures are necessarily connected to graduation. It could be a failure in an elective that is not holding them back. So I, I need to do a little more digging, and I have to say, the guidance counselors have been great about giving me information on their recommendations. The guidance office sent me the, the failure reports very quickly.
Cora basically worked all last weekend, she did this over the weekend, so...
There's another great example of having good data.
Yeah, yes, and time on the weekend is well worth it, if the board says, go, go, bring them to summer school, worth every minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Do I have a verbal, like, yeah?
Yes.
I already got that.
Just wanted to hear it out loud.
Is there any discussion? Who was in favor? For those of you that are out there as well.
We didn't know they were, we were going to let her have the mic.
Can we rescind the...
Hello. Good evening. I'm glad you all wanted to see me so badly. My name is Sarah. My name is Sarah Hoager, and I live at Forty Hudson Drive Hyde Park. And as some of you may know, today is the final Board of Education meeting for Glenn Watson. By my calculations, Glenn, you've done at least four hundred and eight board meetings and over twenty-five hundred minutes, at least, of board minute times. Glenn has served for over twelve continuous years on the board. The job of a board member is difficult and stressful. Decisions must be made which support what is best for the community, but these decisions may at times be in conflict with the needs of a particular individual. Thank you for having the courage to make these decisions. There have been many positive changes to the district while you've been in the board. For example, the look of pride that the high school students now feel again for their school is contagious throughout the community. I'm proud of you, Glenn. Job well done. One more thing, I wanted to also take a moment and read a statement by the Reverend Donald R. Hoager, who was too ill to attend this meeting. Among my heroes are people who find ways to do good, to help society and people in particular. They make our world a better place even as they make themselves examples for others. With that, I name my current hero Glenn Watson, who has just completed three terms on the school board of Hyde Park. Exciting moments through the years were coupled with many hours of meetings discussing what needs to be done to make the district the best it can be. He also did note that some of these meetings might be boring, which is very, very hard to imagine. For what you have selflessly done to strengthen our schools has touched us all. Donald Hoager, your proud father-in-law. Thanks again, Glenn.
Thanks, Dad.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening, everyone. Carol Pickering, Hyde Park. I came specifically to thank two people. First, I would like to thank Mrs. Barbara Marine, our outgoing high school principal, and to just say a few things about what she's done in the eight years that she's been with us. A few of you may remember that we had three high school principals in six years. Between 2000 and 2006, we had three principals. Number three left without any warning or communication, and I'll always remember Cora's call to me, I was on vacation, which it ruined, and came back in late August to, without a high school principal to open FDR in 2006 August. And I'll always consider it a bit of a miracle that somehow my thinking and Barbara's thinking, which I then brought to the board for its thinking, and it came together, and Barbara became the high school principal in 2006. During those, these eight years, it is my personal and professional opinion that FDR stabilized, became a very secure place, became a very safe place, always keeping in mind academic improvement and the good of all the students. And that is no small feat. I often think that it is really the hardest job in a school district these days, and in so many ways, it's just so challenging. And so Barbara, I just want to thank you, and I'm glad I did see you come in because I wanted you to be here to hear what I had to say. And Barbara's going to a very, to a job that she held by her own choice, a director of fine performing arts. She did very successfully, and she'll do it very successfully again. And while that's a very demanding job, she's not going to have to have her cellphone between her ear and her pillow every night because it will just be, I think, something that will be different and very good for you and for the district. So thank you, Barbara Marine, for your service to us as FDR principal for eight years. And second, of course, I would like to, I came to thank Glenn Watson, and it's hard for me to think of things that haven't been said, but I'm going to say them anyway because I have my own perspective on working with you for eight of the twelve years. And what I have to say, among agreeing with all the great things that have been said about you and your service, is that you always met and maintained that two-pronged standard for, in my view, for board service, which is to provide as much as you could for all the kids in Hyde Park at a cost that we thought, you thought, we thought the community could bear. And that's always the juggle, and that's always the challenge. We'd like to provide it all, all kinds of summer school, all kinds of activities, but then we always have to consider, can the community, will the community pay for it? You always maintained that two-pronged standard, and you always served with honor and integrity and care. And that's quite a feat over a twelve-year period to have maintained that, that level of service and reputation. And I would say as a board member, you talk the least, and for that you get a prize. You get a prize for that, and I put it on your table.
Oh, is that what that is?
That's what that is. But when you did speak, you always said something meaningful and important, and sometimes it would just cut right to the chase. I would tell you that. You would just say that one thing, and it would just, whoop, would just go right, just cut right through it and really have meaning and purpose. So thank you, Glenn. I want you to know that for me as a citizen, to sit for two and a half hours just so I could say thank you, that's really pretty, pretty great. So thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? We are out of public participation. Wow, this is the first time, we don't really have to answer anything, right?
No.
This is good. Life is good.
I'd say thank you.
The next item, I'm sorry, you do it. No, go ahead.
No, I'm done. I don't talk much, remember?
Oh, that's...
Sarah, he'll show you his plaque afterwards. We did it earlier.
I'd like to suggest to the board that we move the exit poll survey results...
Second.
...to another meeting.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Be good, okay.
I wanted to talk about that one.
Come back and talk to us in July.
Yeah, 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 okay.
We've got a microphone saved for you.
So let's move to ten point one. I have a motion to adopt Board of Education meeting calendar for 2014-15 as we discussed at the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to reiterate what's already been discussed, and that is that locations aren't necessarily set in stone on this calendar.
That's correct.
And that we're going to avoid putting all the school visits at the end of the...
That is correct.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Yeah, the locations.
All those, thank you.
Yeah.
May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, am I? Can I?
You're on.
Okay, well, before we move it, we definitely would like to recognize some people in the audience who are on the agenda, soon to be, hopefully not have to join us for a long evening again in the near future unless they're presenting, but I would like to recognize that we have Ashley. I can't see her behind the podium. We have Ashley Playford. Stand up and wave. She is being appointed this evening to a probationary position in math at FDR High School, so thank you for joining us.
Welcome.
We also have Mike Ruela, who is returning not as dean of students but as an assistant principal at Haviland Middle School, and so welcome, Mike. And also, we did have an opportunity at an earlier board meeting where we expressed similar thoughts to Carol about Barbara's years of service, and I had the opportunity to express to Barbara that I probably would have aged ten years and not have been able to sleep for the last three months if I thought that she was going to retire or going far away or even going to town over, but knowing that Barbara will still be here as a resource and for the transition has certainly eased my mind. And with that, I would like to welcome Rick Partey, who is on the agenda tonight as our new FDR principal, so stand up and wave.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Next is Special Education placement. Normally, Dan adds that information. Viva, do you have anything to add?
No, we're rolling along. Actually, I should say the last CSE meeting was held this afternoon at FDR.
Okay. May I have a motion to, for a 12.1 Special Education placement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 12.2 Consultant Agreement for Special Education Services.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. I have a motion for 12.3 Rescind from Recommendations as listed in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 12.4 Establish Centur...
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, good, I can never say that word. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? You can tell it's late. And I have a motion for 12.5 Increase in General Fund as listed in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. I have a motion for 12.6 Terms and Conditions of Employment of Confidential Managerial Staff Members.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 12.7 Memorandum of Agreement with the HPAA, please.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I have something I would like to say about this. Going to vote no, not because I don't want this to pass, I actually do want it to pass. However, we asked for the first paragraph in this memorandum. It was a simple request of the HPAA. It hurt no one. It helps the district, and we really needed it to hire Mr. Partey as an experienced educator in another district. There was very little incentive for him to move with the conditions that were already in the contract. This should have been a no-brainer. However, I feel we were held ransom because of whatever reason that we were pretty much blackmailed into putting the second paragraph in this memorandum of agreement that helps one person and only one person. I'm very disappointed in the association, and I am going to vote no on this, so all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you very much.
I just wanted, I was going to say something too, but I didn't get a chance to.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I was obviously really annoyed when I first heard, you know, something for something, and, you know, I came to the conclusion that ultimately, you know, unfortunately, the world of collective bargaining, you know, you don't get something for nothing, and what was being asked for, and to my mind, once I understood it, was not unreasonable. So that's why I voted for it.
Okay, moving on. May I have a motion for 12.8 Capital Project Change Voters?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion for 12.9 Recall of Teachers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. I have a motion for 12.10 Rescind Recall of Teacher. How often do we do that? Not very often.
So moved.
Is there any, any discussion?
So moved.
Oh, sorry, second.
Second.
Yeah, any discussion?
Yeah, can you give us a little more information here?
Sure. Well, this is because with the, okay, so this is a domino game. So the position of dean at the high school was eliminated. That caused our colleague to have rights to return to a science position, Mr. Ruela. We recalled Mr. Ruela to that science position, very happily. Then we had opportunity to fill the AP position at Haviland. So we, even more happily, appointed Mr. Ruela tonight to that position. He can't hold two positions. The board had already recalled him on a previous agenda, so we needed to rescind his recall in order to appoint him to the AP position. Personnel is a happy, busy place.
And obviously free up that science position to somebody else, right?
Exactly, that's correct.
Had he, had he, before he became the dean, because if we had to recall him, did that mean that he'd lose his position because of just the way the dominoes fell with a reduction in force or...
He was accessed officially.
Right, okay, so he actually kept his job because of the dean's position, and then, right, and then that's why he was recalled to a science, okay, I understand.
That's correct.
Okay.
We're finished talking about you, Mike.
Yep. You still have a job, so you're good.
That's a good thing.
So all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I may have a motion for 12.11 Creation of a Position.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And here we are, back to public participation. Would anybody like to, I may have a motion to enter public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Would anybody like to address the board? Mr. Partey.
He is a community member, is that right?
I am, I am. First of all, I'd like to extend my appreciation to the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Rycheck, Assistant Superintendent Stempel, Kafka, and Mr. Kralender. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a particularly exciting day for me. I greatly appreciate, and I'm actually very humbled, and I just, it's exciting. I want to let you know that. I'd also like to take a moment, and as a parent, and having had two students graduate from FDR, I'd like to extend, she's not here anymore, but I certainly want to extend my appreciation to Ms. Marine. She's done a great job, and I really look forward to working with her in the future. So that's exciting to me. To Mr. Plecha, Mr. Cowan, and all the staff, we have a new one there. All right? I greatly look forward to working with all of you. It's going to be very exciting. I can't wait to embark on that mission. And it comes back to me because as I look back, it's particularly personal, and I'm going to say that to you folks right now, being at Roosevelt. Both of my grandfathers came over to this country. They both came from two different countries, and they came here with the idea in mind they needed to get away from fascism, and they needed to find freedom. And they came during Roosevelt's presidency. During that time, one of my grandfathers was very fortunate to work for a gentleman named Henry Morgenthau. He became his head groundskeeper over a prolonged period of time, and I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time on the farm and the estate and see the lands. But there was one thing that always came out in his head, and there was one thing that he would always talk to me about as being one of the greatest moments of his life, and that was driving FDR around that estate. Because to him, FDR meant freedom. It meant opportunity, and that gentleman believed very strongly in our president. So as I come here tonight and I stand before all of you, I have to tell you that for me... I have to tell you that for me, freedom is very important in terms of education, specifically now, more than ever. The opportunity for our folks, students, families in the Hyde Park School District, that they have the opportunity to have the freedom to work where they wanna work, to go to college where they wanna work, where they wanna be. And also the opportunity, and, and that comes from their education. And that's going to be our job. And I take that job very, very seriously. And I really wanna say to you folks, I appreciate your belief in me, and it's going to be up to me, and I fully, and it's late, but I'm very excited to be here and to work on behalf of the parents, the students, and the entire community of the Hyde Park School District. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. And would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, thank you very much. Are there any board subcommittee reports? I know I haven't, we haven't had any meetings myself, I don't, I don't believe there are. Okay, upcoming meetings. The next Board of Education meeting will be the annual organizational meeting and general business meeting will be held on Tuesday. That's Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand and fourteen, six o'clock PM at the administration office. Okay, so remember, six o'clock, not seven. Okay. I believe we have no need for an executive session.
Or desire.
So may I have a, uh, a motion from Mr. Watson to adjourn?
You most certainly have a motion to adjourn from me.
Thank you.
Second.
I think we all second that.
Second.
Is there any discussion, Glenn?
No.
No. All in favor? Opposed, thank you very much.